Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of October the 17th. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting. Some members in public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Media Center, 184 West Main Street. There's also a link available to join the meeting via the Zoom app, as well as a meeting ID, which is 638-929-1060. The meeting will -- there's also a phone number, for those of you who just dial by phone. The meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, relatively live, and it will also be available on replay on the Norton Media Center's YouTube channel. For future sessions, if you have questions of the board and aren't able to attend the session, please feel free to email them to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, so they can be forwarded to the board in advance and read into the record as appropriate. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Just for everybody's awareness, we do have two members who are not able to attend this week, and we have one member who's joining us remotely. So we do have a member joining us virtually, but we'll do our best to kind of balance virtual and in-person attendance as best we can for questions and comments. I don't believe we have any bills or warrants to attend to at this time, or minutes. Correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'll move into the rest of our agenda. The first item up is A&R endorsement, 15908, Zero Crane Street. And we have -- applicant is PJ Bavinow. I'm not sure if we have somebody from this project here to attend. We do not. Okay. But Brian has this up on the screen, and we've all had it available and permitted. So the applicant is looking to divide up this lot into...
Five.
Five lots.
So, quick background, we did approve this previously last year. However, A&R is required to be sent to the registry of deeds in six months. And since it's been over six months, we do have to re-endorse. It is the same plan. The Mylar is over there on the table. I have a paper that we can just sign in its place for the date.
Okay. So we're signing as an extension, correct?
Or another six months.
So are there any questions, comments, concerns, to on signing the extension on the A&R? Other than that, I'm looking to a motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse A&R 15908.
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you, Eric and Jim. Any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay. I will go through the roll for members in person first, and then Steve, you joining us on the Zoom. So Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So Steve, you'll get to save your signature for another time, but the four of us can endorse the extension, and we'll move on with this project. Next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding road acceptance for Leonard Street. Again, this -- they are looking for the endorsement request of the board. So I know we have representatives from ConDyne here, as well as somebody joining us virtually. So if you'd like to just come up to the podium area and give the board an overview of what you're looking for.
Thank you for having us, committee members. My name's Don O'Neill from ConDyne. We're here to convey the acceptance of the Leonard Street extension, as well as the release of the $2 million bond being held. I should have Brandon Carr, who's our civil engineer, online. If not, then you can step right through.
I do see Brandon on the Zoom meeting, as well as Jeff O'Neill.
Okay. What we like to do is kind of give everybody an update where we're at. And what we did, we were able to fly drone last week during the weekend. Brandon can bring that up, just to give you a finished look. It's been a long run, and now it's time to show you the end game as a start.
Brandon, I'm not sure if you're able to unmute and share at this time. I see you in the meeting, and I see you muted. So if you're looking for the mute button, I'll ramble for a couple of seconds here.
It is totally...
It's actually open twice, actually, yeah. It's possible there are computer issues there.
And I can continue if you want to buy some time?
Sure. Go ahead.
We have achieved the certificate of compliance for the roadway from the Conservation Commission through John Thomas, one of the first accomplishments. We received approval for certificate of compliance for Buildings 9 and Buildings 12 on Phase We have received our certificate of occupancy on Building 9 from the Building Commissioner, Nick Guy Frady. We have turned over all our ASB builds to the Water Department and DPW Department, which have locked the site previous, the road, as well as Buildings 9 and 12. And John Howland was instrumental in gathering all the ASB builds. The sewer pumping station has been completed. Speed limit signs have been installed, as well as truck directional signs to 495 instead of going to the opposite direction. We have met with the Fire Department continuously throughout the Phase 2 and have their approval on the street address early on in our process. And all testing is complete with all the fire hydrants, as well as Building 9. And we're waiting for final power for National Grid for Building 12 to come online. The access gates have been installed for life safety to Janet Street, as agreed early on, as well as the water connection and loop, giving positive pressure not only to Leonard Street, but all the streets behind the development. The road was constructed to the town standards, and all testing reports in water and sewer have been delivered. Our first tenant, Yale Appliance, has just started moving their inventory into Building 9 over the past week. So it's been a long run, and now we're coming to the end game of what we agreed upon with additional fencing, additional landscapes, berms, everything that we said we'd do from the start is complete.
Okay. And you're looking -- again, you're looking for the board's endorsement. Just from a point of information, because this is an extension, this does not require action at town meetings, is that correct? Or is that still a pending action as well?
We've met with the town manager previous to tonight's meeting. We've met, and at that meeting, DPW was a part of that meeting, Water Department was part of the meeting, Fire Department was a part of that meeting. So Brian, I'm not sure what the next step is in our...
So the next step would be select board endorsement, and then they would have to go to town meeting.
So it does need to go to town meeting at a future point, but...
Right. And I think the acceptance is important, number one, to get on the ballot. I think it's in May?
The spring, yeah.
It's the spring for town vote, as well as, more importantly, the release of the $2 million bond as in this.
Understood. Okay. I have not seen Brandon rejoin the meeting. So I'm not sure if Jeff has access to the video to share, if he'd like, or if we'd like to approach it from another direction.
Jeff, do you have the video available?
Let me look right now, give me a couple of seconds. That is correct, that we would be on for a spring town meeting and looking for the acceptance this evening.
So while we try and find the video, do members of the board have questions as it relates to our endorsement of the town accepting the extension of the road as part of this process? Understanding that the next step would be to the select board, and then we'll go to full town meeting in the spring. Here we go.
So this is two videos that we did over the weekend. This is the road access coming in. That is part of our discussion. That is a 48 tractor trailer going up the road. All the turns have been designed to make the radiuses. This is a glimpse of Building 9.
The Yale Building, yeah.
Which is the Yale Building, the first tenant. As the truck continues, this is the balance of the road coming up that will end at a cul-de-sac, and the turning radiuses there have all been done. It gives you a little bit of idea there. And Jeff, I don't know if you have access to the second video?
Let's back off.
Sorry about that, guys. I assumed I was ready, but I didn't join.
That's okay.
I have the other video if you want me to share it, Ken.
Sure. Go ahead, Brian.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So that's the one that's shown. This is kind of an aerial view of the whole back half. So this one, you can see the Yale Building, obviously the bigger building, and then the other Building 12 on your right. And this one gives a good view of kind of the back side of the Yale Building, where the connection to Janet Street is. And you can see the sound walls installed, I don't know why it is. But from this view, you can see the sound walls on the back there and the screening that remains of Janet Street. But, you know, as Don said, the... I want to keep the back on it. But ConCOP has signed up on the project. We've submitted the full ASB builds to the Building Department. The other town departments have all signed off. So we're just looking to get the road accepted and the bond released for the public improvement.
Thank you, Brandon. Was there anything else that you had in your initial introduction that may not have been covered?
No, I missed what Don said, but I started talking before the meeting, so I think he pretty much probably covered it. I have, you know, if anybody has any specific questions on the plan or the subdivision, I mean, I have those plans available if anybody wants me to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, you know, we're here for any questions the board can have.
Thank you. So I know I can see everybody here. Steve, I'll put you on the spot here from the virtual perspective. Is there any questions that you have as it relates to our endorsement of the accepting of this roadway extension?
Well, not really, but I guess it got blown real quick. So if we endorse this road, does that grant that area all new frontage or new lots?
I mean, technically it would, but the lots that are there, Lots 9 and 12, which are the two developed lots, the other side of the road is all wooden, so it's not developable anyways. There is another lot as part of the subdivision that was approved further up towards Leonard Street, like right as you go in for potential future building. But that would be the only developable lot left along this road.
Okay. Right. The subdivision was broken down into four lots, Lot 1, 2, 3, and 4. The only remaining lot to be developed would be Lot 4, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. So again, we're looking for a motion to endorse, or if we have any other questions.
Maybe just for Brian, do we have any feedback from neighbors, Brian? Any calls, emails, anything?
No, I haven't heard anything. Okay. Yeah, there's a motion to endorse the acceptance of the extension as a roadway.
Motion to accept the extension of the Leonard Street roadway.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Eric and Jim. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. I will now go through the roll again. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chair, does that conclude the release of the bond? That motion?
I would have to... I would be -- I would refer back to the conditions of the bond, and whether it was to the board's endorsement or to the town's acceptance of the road.
I believe it was to the board's endorsement, and during that process, we had the option to get 50% of it released halfway through. So we're just doing it 100% at completion now.
Okay. So we've endorsed it? So whatever is subsequent to that, we... Yes.
So does that have to be done via a motion with the board now?
Understood. Okay. So the applicant is asking if we would like to make a second motion, just to be very clear that we are releasing them from the bond for the completion of the roadway.
So we'll... Seconded.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alan, for the motion. And who's the second?
I think the second.
Eric has the second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Thank you, Jeff, for making us make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Rs.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good night, everybody.
Okay. Well, I'll continue with the rest of our agenda. First one up in the list is site plan review for Zero South Washington. This is an application to construct a 4,000-square-foot building. This is continued from a couple of sessions, and there's also a site that we talked about previously. But as we determined in a past session, this is a different plan that we're moving forward with for a lay-down lot at the site. So we have... Brian, thank you for following up the plans so quickly. And I'll let the applicant get started, and if you could just... Now, Bob, we talked to you a number of times. Just introduce yourself for the record again.
I am a crawl engineering, and I'm representing Northeast Shorey. David Torque is in the background. So the last time we were here, well, we came in and spoke to you, but prior to that, we had a plan that had 101 parking spots. And the work area that we had is identical to what we have here. There's a dash line going around, and that work area has not changed. And we've talked to Conservation, and we're just doing an amended notice of intent because we're working within that same area. And it's a very different plan than what we had. It's basically a gravel lot. We're going to be putting up a 40-by-100-foot building. We're going to have a 20-foot pavement in front of it, just for parking, just so things don't get all messed up, and a dumpster. And the drainage on the site is... If you go to the next... The drainage is on the bottom of Florida down there. There's a, I think it's 60-by-120-foot basin, yeah, 60-by-120-foot basin, and it's a stone basin. It's wrapped in filter fabric, and this way he can drive over it. And we had looked at doing a conventional basin, and that just reduced what he could do with it, so redesigned it. So now he can use basically the whole lot. Also, up on the... We're the panhandle of Florida. We have a trench, there's a trench system going along there. It's also a stone trench. And it's all an infiltration system, and it's all 50-plus feet away from the wetlands, so it meets that criteria.
Okay.
So this is it. It's all graded, it's going to be gravel. It's very much simpler. There's a lot fewer plans. There's a lot fewer details. So that's what... It's just going to be a building we're putting up for dry storage at this time. That's all it's going to be. And he may not do it right away, but that's what he plans on doing. The entryway is right where we had it before. The only difference is we don't have an island in the middle of it. Before, it was a little different situation. We had vehicles going in and out of it. This is going to be a far lower usage of vehicles coming in and out of the lot. So it'll be used for laying... It's a lay-down lot, so he can do that. And maybe it's something you might have a landscape or something that may use it similarly, something to that effect. Is there anything you want to add to that, Dave?
No, that's pretty much it.
So...
That's it.
But that's what we're doing, and Conservation has the plans, and we'll be talking about them shortly. But I've done the drainage on the site so many times, it's going to work. It will work, and so... And they have something that they can deal with, so I'm confident this product, this will fly.
So in terms of... So as a site plan review, this is an as-of-right use. Are we anticipating... Are they proposed hours of operation, or are they proposed at 24/7?
It's really just during the regular business hours, there's nothing really going on over there. There's no business operations, no ongoing parking. It's just going to be storage over there, that's all it is.
But there is the understanding that somebody could be dropping off something out there later in the evening on whatever occasion for...
Not really, no. No, we're strictly business hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 in the morning till typically 3:00, 3:30, and I come out. I can't anticipate anything outside of that. I have no plans for that, and I can't imagine anything that would involve that at all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant here as it relates to this use? And any, again, as a site plan review, if there are any conditions that we want to discuss, we can discuss them?
I take it Conservation hasn't seen this yet? Is that a case of...
The plants, they're sending it out for...
I mean, you haven't had a meeting with them yet.
Well, we haven't had the public hearing yet, but I've spoken to John Thomas numerous times, and he knows what's coming.
Intended that pervious with stormwater, right?
Yes.
Is that they're doing a peer review of stormwater?
Yeah. I was just told recently that somehow you cannot have pervious lots like this due to the new Mass MS4 guidelines or something.
If it's gravel, it's not a pervious.
Pervious.
Pervious, sorry.
So I don't know, that just sticks in my head. That's what I was advised recently. I don't know if it's true, false, how it applies here. That's my only reservation, is that...
The stormwater system.
... condition upon stormwater system, which suppose we can make that thing...
We could certainly condition a stormwater approval. Not that that's not a requirement, anyway.
Exactly.
Anything over an acre, we have to do stormwater, so...
Yeah. So we probably don't even need to condition it, as long as it's being reviewed and the documents.
That would not be the first time this already, the board has done a appropriate condition to make this road better.
I... This is all, it's all done.
Yeah.
And all forward properly to you.
Thank you for keeping the driveway where it is. Having it aligned with the cabinet driveway makes the most sense, just from visibility and sightlines perspective. In the absence of board members jumping up with questions and comments, I'll just turn and see if there's any joining the meeting here in person or virtually from members of the public who would like to ask a question of the board at this time as it relates to the Zero South Washington application. So again, we're looking for... If we have questions to ask the applicant, we can ask them. Otherwise, we'll be looking for motion to approve, with conditions, without conditions. Are there any conditions that we want to address?
We want a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing, just from my... I'm going to make sure that I'm going to say this out loud. If we close the public hearing, that means we're not going to ask the applicant any more questions. So if we're going to ask them about conditions or anything like that, we should wait. But if there's no further discussion, I'll go forward with that motion. Are you comfortable with us closing the public hearing at this time?
Yes.
Always making sure.
Yes.
Okay. Eric, I will start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have any further motions?
Motion to approve SDR 20651 with our standard conditions.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with standard planning board conditions. Any further discussion on the motion? I would say that standard conditions, probably for an industrialism, would not include its limited hours of operation. So we have a motion to approve with standard conditions. I'll go through the roll again. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Good luck with Conservation.
Thank you.
And we'll talk to you again soon, I'm sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is site plan review and special permits. So I'm going to go through all the numbers here while Zero Mansfield Avenue team comes in. Site plan reviews 20100, 20103, 20106, and 19928. And a special permit, 19928, 19935, and 20107. Why those are not consecutive, I cannot answer for anybody. Okay? So welcome back. I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself, and then provide the update that you're looking to provide.
Will do. My name is Jack Jacobi. I'm an attorney with the office at 144 Bank Street in Attleboro. Represent the applicant. Nick Reuter is here.
He had to leave.
He had to leave. He's not here from concern. Dan Campbell, the engineer from Club of Design, is here. When we were last with you over at the library three weeks ago, you indicated that if there were any questions or comments board members had, that you would send them through Brian to us. We did not receive anything. I'm not sure what to make of that, but...
There was one, at least one comment that was sent, correct? Is that... We had one. Okay. Not necessarily full-site comment, but yes. Okay.
So what... And what I have done is that I put together a rationale addressing the standards that you must review in order to act on these special permits. And I'm not going to read it to you. You have it. My wonderful prose is what it is. There it is. But I did want to hit some highlights of it.
Sure.
And Mr. Chairman made a very cogent comment at the last hearing that you must look at the four corners... that you must look at the four corners of your bylaw to determine what standard you may take into account and which one you may not take into account. And that is absolutely correct. It has been endorsed by the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth. That is the law. And so the first standard is whether the housing that's proposed is socially and economically desirable. And I would suggest to you that housing shelter is probably in third place behind water and food in terms of the necessities for human life. We all know that there is a housing crisis in Massachusetts. Norton is not exempt from it. As a matter of fact, I read with great interest the master plan that I believe this board crafted about two years ago and was adopted by the town, which specifically calls for the creation of additional housing. I would also point out to you that in at least one place, if not two, in that plan, and I cite you to pages 24 and 28, the creation of apartments and townhomes was specifically endorsed and specifically endorsed for this particular district as being the policy of the town. So I commend those pages to you. If you haven't read the report in the last two years, I would recommend that you might wanna look at that again. You also have obligations as an MBTA community towards creating things. And I believe that this can help you in meeting your goals. But that's between the town and the MBTA, not for us to say.
The MBTA's rules are interesting, to say the least, right now.
Yes, they are. Probably will change several times, but they are what they are.
Yes.
I'd also suggest to you that there are some other socially desirable things associated with this. One is that we're creating sidewalks. And as I read the master plan, sidewalks in this area and within a half mile of the library are considered to be very desirable. You're looking for walkability. You're looking for residents to be able to get on foot around town rather than taking their cars a short distance. And also, we are extending the sewer line by approximately a half mile, which ties in very well with the sewer commission's requirements and their future plans. And if you may remember, they asked us not to put it in reservoir but to put it in Mansfield Avenue because that is apparently on their future critical needs. And of course, this will be turned over to the town at no cost. The economically desirable is interesting also. There is a difference between economic desirability and fiscal desirability. And as the Supreme Judicial Court has said, you can look at the economic desirability, but you cannot look at the fiscal desirability. So the impact on schools or a fire department or anything else, the courts have said, is not something that you're allowed to take into account in acting on these things. I would also note that my understanding is your school population has been declining as most of the towns around here have experienced that as well. But the idea of the economics is that if you add 74 apartments, you're going to add a certain number of residents, probably at least 74, maybe 125. And those people will be paying taxes. They will be paying excise taxes. They will be spending money in town. They will support the local merchants and restaurants. And they will add to your labor pool the people who would be available to work in those places. So I believe that economic desirability is also checked here. Moving on, one of the other very, very interesting items is to look at alternatives. And the things that are allowed by right in this district are very interesting. I am gonna take my glasses off and leave. So the uses allowed by right include single-family homes, top-of-the-shop housing, tourist or rooming house, bed and breakfast, educational facility, religious facility, private school, health or recreational club, fraternal lodge, professional offices, bank, retail stores, medical or dental offices, conference centers, corporate offices, repair shops, wholesale offices, a bus terminal, commercial parking lot, restaurants, artisan manufacturing, and indoor recreation. I will submit to you that every one of those uses would have far greater impacts on the neighborhood than this residential use would. And I say that in terms of traffic. I say that in terms of increased impervious area because the parking lots would be required. I say that in terms of lighting that would be required. I say that in terms of the hours of operation of most of those businesses. And so, which certainly produces noise. So I would suggest to you that those uses, those alternative uses would have a far greater impact than this use on the neighborhood. I also found top-of-the-shop housing to be very interesting. I didn't find a definition, but it appears to me that top-of-the-shop housing means that you have retail on the first floor and the second and third floor are apartments. So by right, if we had retail on the first floor, this would be site plan review and not a special permit, which is very interesting. But as I said, we're proposing not to have the lighting and the noise and the traffic associated with the first floor being anything other than residential. So that is an interesting part of your bylaw. Also, one of our neighbors suggested that there was a study that, if I remember what he said correctly, that housing costs 1.4x what the taxes that are produced. And so I would say to you a couple of things. One is that the courts have been very clear that you can't take that into account. But even if you were to take that into account, he would need to present to you that study. And I have actually seen that study. It's a number of years old. And what it does is that it reflects single-family houses, which have 2.5 kids in them, all going to the schools, and then turnover every 20 or 30 years to have a fresh new set of kids going to the schools. And so I would suggest to you that these apartments with the smaller number of bedrooms, the smaller sizes, will not be producing those kinds of impacts. So I did wanna address that because he did. But I would suggest to you that that is simply not one of the standards that you are allowed to take into account.
It is a study I have heard off and on, on my time at the board.
Yes. Everybody brings it up. I'm not sure anyone's actually read it or knows what the citation is to it, but it's common law. So I would suggest to you that the standards of looking at economic and social desirability, looking at alternatives, looking at economic impact, that we do meet the standards and that this is an appropriate project for this location. And then we'll just finish by saying that obviously the peer review has not occurred yet, so we'll obviously be asking you to continue this to another appropriate date. I don't know if Dan has anything he wants to add.
So just briefly, as long as everybody's had the opportunity to look at the modification, where we pulled everything a little bit further away from the residences on Reservoir, the modification of the sewer, which gave a little bit more information. Brian has the sewer plan up, the original site plan having to do with the apartments. But our modification that has the townhomes that we presented at the last public hearing on Lot E and the two buildings for the apartments as well. It's in the other, the other email section. Those, that is what we would propose to move forward with. Once we finalize that, the Conservation 3 is what it should be.
So we have, we have continued at the Conservation Commission because we wanted to get some more feedback from this board as to whether that was the appropriate way to proceed with them because we'd like one peer review rather than multiple peer reviews.
Our intention after this evening is to finalize the design. The traffic engineer plans to take our new design with the townhouses, two apartment buildings, finalize his traffic in accordance with the comments that the board had on the other projects in the area. And then we can send it for review, which Brian got the quote in last week for.
Okay.
So we would ask if you just hold off on submitting that for the peer review until we supplement the materials that we promised you. And we'll supplement timely and then it can go out. Because again, we don't want the peer reviewer to look at something and then say, "Oh, you've got additional information."
Nobody changes deadlines when you give the new scope, does it? Okay. So thank you for the introduction, the overview. I'll go to the board members here in terms of, as the applicant has stated, they're looking for direction and guidance from us as it relates to this plan to finalize peer review direction and direction to Conservation. Again, this is a, these are special permits. They are individual special permits. But I think what we need to do is give the applicant clear direction on, is this what we want them to submit for peer review or not? As they mentioned, there could be other uses as an as-of-right use on this lot, which they could have proposed. What they proposed is this multifamily development. So if, if our direction is, we don't like the townhomes, if our direction is we don't like the apartment buildings, if the apartment is, if the direction is, we can't see anything with single-family on this lot, those are the guidances that we need to try to provide them. So Steve, I see you looking to make a comment?
Yeah. Yeah, is it time to make much comments now?
Please do, yes.
All right. Well, going over some of the things that the developer mentioned, one of them being the rights of like what you're already allowed to do by right. A lot of those things actually should be in that district and that is correct, that our zoning for Village Commercial includes a lot of different uses that build the commercial district. None of those are included in his property. The idea of shop housing actually sounds like a counterfeit within the Village Commercial District. So that, that's one comment I'd like to make. As far as advantages over disadvantages, the major disadvantage I see is the loss of one of our iconic sort of sections of forest. An undeveloped area that my entire life has been a nice forest. And I had offered another version, another concept of their plan that would have allowed their apartments but also mitigated how much forest they would like to destroy, I guess, so to say. But that was not really dealt with. My plan would have eliminated curb cuts also, which would have been a safety factor. It would have eliminated a certain amount of driveway space and paving that didn't need to happen. I preferred the parking lot in the back, which is what the Village Commercial District asks for. The developer mentioned that when he talked to Conservation about it, they said they want parking lot in the front, but I don't know if he necessarily addressed that. Within the plan that I would propose, that a whole section of forest would have been saved also in that process, which I don't know if that would stew the Conservation's concept of at all. And the other thing that I had mentioned, by pushing all the houses close together, it can become affordable how, a percentage. And if we're talking about the need for housing in this area, how desperately people need housing, affordable housing is actually what we need in this area. Not, not housing that's not necessarily affordable. That's, I do feel like there's ways to make this much more of an advantage to the town and to the developer without killing the developer's project, without saying no to all of it. But I don't think most of those concerns are being addressed. And the number one thing is that corner lot that, from the houses on Reservoir Street, is gonna look terrible. I've mentioned it a couple times. It seems very out of place. It's not in line with the other buildings. I would like to see that corrected. I mean, I mentioned it, you don't have to listen, but this is a huge concern to me. And again, I don't think any of your project doesn't have to happen because of an adjustment to your project. So that's, that's my side.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think, just to, Steve, I think the point that Conservation is, they wanted separation from the stuff that happens on parking areas away from the wetlands area in the back. So that was the, that was, I think, their determination. And Mr. Campbell, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if that's...
That is correct.
Okay.
The buildings, in essence, act as a buffer between what happens in the parking lot and getting to the wetlands.
My, my primary question, if I can, was, are we talking about Lot E as it was originally proposed or Lot E with the townhouses, where we've pulled those houses now another 60 feet away from the residential lot?
And we've made them two stories.
Two stories instead of three.
And we were able to improve the fencing and plantings as well.
Correct, and cut far less. If you remember the first plan, we had fencing along Reservoir because that's how close we were getting. And now we have 60 feet of buffer. So my question was, if Lot E was a concern generally, was it a concern for the original plan? Is it as much of a concern for the townhouse plan? To get a little direction on that as well.
Okay. My concern overall is the conservation of Lot E in its entirety. Of course, the townhouses do seem better than the large building. It is less offensive viewing-wise. And it is a little bit more in character with, I guess, we would say like a traditional small-town village. But I would still like the consideration of being able to move, if what the townhouses are not, closer together with the other buildings in an effort to protect the forest without losing your development. And also providing the people there and the town residents with a whole section of forest that could be used as maybe a park space or permanently protected.
Okay. That is something that, I mean, that's something that we can consider. And I would also say that these are individual special permits and site plan reviews. So we've talked about them in aggregate. We will vote on them individually. But I think the direction that the townhouses are better than the first submitted from your perspective is good context to have. I think if we, Norton's bylaws do limit one building per lot. So we wouldn't need, if we started to open that can of worms, we would need to redo in the lot lines again.
Yes.
Which, that's, I'm not sure if that's something that... It feels like something that would be, that the board would need to be pretty unanimous on to do from that perspective. I saw you really hand him Steve, so I'll let you kind of... You're muted, Steve.
Yeah, I'm good?
Yeah.
All right. Under the Affordable Housing Bylaw, if we increase, or if the developer increases the affordable housing in that project up to 30%, then the planning board has the ability to reduce lot lines, the lot setbacks, and building placement. If they were to do an affordable housing project, we could adjust, they could change the... the boundaries, but it could be done at a smaller, to a smaller portion than what is required right now without the four laws. We would be able to push the building.
That is something that they could propose. So I guess just from a, to restate kind of a point information, this is, none of these properties are intended for affordable housing under the state guidelines.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your bylaw, interestingly, has affordability requirements that apply to lots created like before a certain date rather than after a certain date.
Norton is not alone in having bylaws that are not necessarily coherent compared to them.
It was a bit of a head scratcher when I read it.
So, our question continues, and, you know, if Steve, because I don't know his last name, is done, if anybody else...
Sure.
Also had direction would be fantastic.
I would like to get some feedback from the abutters about the top shop, because that seems like it would be a lot more of an impact than just the residential housing. Like I said, I would like to get feedback from the abutters on that if they would want commercial underneath, which would be way more traffic, especially throughout the day and night with the housing above.
Ironically, from our standpoint, it would also be quite a bit more pavement.
Way more of an impact.
Way more of an impact, not only environmentally, but from a traffic standpoint.
And more lighting, more noise, you know, pizza place open until 11 o'clock at night. It's, if I lived across the street, I'd prefer to see all housing, but maybe that's just me.
Well, I would want to hear from the abutters.
Absolutely.
It's a, it's a challenge to speculate on what retail could be, because it could be a real estate office that closes at 4:30. It could be a restaurant that's open till later. It could be a 24-hour laundromat.
Is Alberto's correct, is...
It's further.
No, but what I'm saying is, and the example is, Alberto says, I think, four to five apartments up top with the restaurant below.
I actually don't know.
And it's got four or five apartments up there.
It must smell really good. But yes, so that's, that's a question.
To me, that would be way more impactful than just...
The applicant hasn't proposed it. We can, if people want to give comments on it from a speculative standpoint...
From the abutters standpoint, I would love to hear what their thought is on that. Because that wouldn't require a special permit, just a site plan review.
Depending on which buildings we're talking about and 15 other things.
Yeah.
Do we have, from the board's perspective, do we feel that we want to, again, we're trying to give the applicant direction. Obviously, I'm not going to speak for everybody in terms of how we feel the lots are aligned within, buildings are aligned within the lots. Do we feel that there's advantages to compressing them a little bit, understanding that the peak of that triangle is heavily forested? Is that something that we feel is advantageous? Is it, is having that open space in between the buildings something that we like? Because that's kind of two sides of the same coin. If you try and squish them together, you don't have open space in between them, you don't have lawn area.
From my perspective of what I've heard from them and then what all the uses could be, not being a direct abutter, I like this, but that's why I said, I want to hear it from the actual abutters.
Yeah.
What their thoughts are. I would rather the site with the open space as presented.
Yeah, I like, I like the site plan, this iteration, I like this one a lot better than the previous one. I think this one is very thoughtful.
Okay. Steve, and I know you have your, I see you.
Yeah. If I might say, by compressing the buildings and creating an open space, you have way less abutters impacted by anything that goes there.
Especially down on the corner at the reservoir end, yeah. Yeah.
So I, from our standpoint, I hear twofold. One, we like the internal open space from a resident standpoint of this complex, and from Steve, that something that we could do to compress on Lot E would also be extremely beneficial, and we understand that, so.
Okay.
Part of what I've learned over the years is that listening is an important skill, and we heard you at our previous times with you, and we hear you again. We certainly talked to Mr. Voiter tomorrow and see if there's anything we can do at that on Lot E that may be helpful to the concepts you discussed.
Okay. So if, I'll look at members of the board and see if they have any other questions or directions for the applicant at this time. And I'm rambling for about 10 seconds before I see if there's members of the public joining us in person or remotely who'd like to speak. Steve? You've, Zoom has muted you again, so yes.
I'm back. As far as, can I go, can I show my screen to show the concept that I presented as a way for residents to see what alternative could be?
Yeah, I think we, I think we shared it before, but you should have the ability to share your screen, yeah.
Yeah, share your screen top of the bottom. That's the chat and report.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's the, this is prior to the townhome kind of concept, but yeah.
So the idea of squishing this, this corner lot in here, putting barcos in the back, and of course, if we wanted to add some garages or something, however, it needs to be changed slightly, that is fine, but the amount of forest that would be saved on this end, creating like a contiguous zone, especially for wildlife to pass through, I think is important. And also, as a buffer, if any one of these buildings were to catch fire, the fire department can go behind these buildings and not have any bars catch fire. That might be a consideration. And I did for a couple times. Here's the produce park and the gas station. So anything happening on these properties, if it was top of the shop or if it had some sort of commercial, then it would be across from another commercial building. But if you use Lot E, you are getting by residential, as possible, instead of commercial places.
Yeah.
And then looking up the street, you can see that, you know, you can start seeing the buildings right away, but if you move them way down, it would protect this whole forest area, it creates a really nice view.
Yeah.
You know, by putting the buildings up in the front instead of a parking lot to look at from the roadside, you could look at the nice buildings, and the cars could go in the back. You know, everybody still gets a good view of the trees, the residents will see all the trees, but the road looks nicer without a parking lot in front.
Yeah. We might have competing priorities with Conservation on that, which is always a challenge in terms of...
What is it?
We might have chain, conflicting priorities from a Conservation standpoint with, as they mentioned, with the parking lot and having the buffer area, but...
We, we understand the Lot E consideration.
Yeah.
And we'll take that back, and we will have an answer with a full set of plans for the next meeting.
And you did share with us those particular plans two meetings ago, I think, and we have carefully reviewed them, and we have taken it all into account. And so, you know, we appreciate the efforts.
So now I'm going to go and just see if there's anybody here in person or virtually who'd like to ask the board any questions, have comments. If you're joining virtually, I'd ask that you please try to use the reactions function on your Zoom app, and if you raise your hand, we'll see it. If you're here in the room and you'd like to speak, obviously, I'll see that with my own eyes right in front of me. So while I'm rambling, please don't wait. If anybody's looking to make a comment, please do.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Shavitt, 56 Mansfield Ave. I'm glad we've come around to addressing the four corners of the page.
Sure, understood.
Really?
If you could project a little bit, sir.
Okay.
Maybe the first time you've heard it.
Seems others before me were talking much quieter, but I will do my best. I'm glad that we're now addressing the four corners of the page, and I had a few further comments on that, but also on, as to process, because the process isn't really being followed right in this, and the effects seem to be addressed backwards, and hopefully I can bring something forward on that. But to start with, as far as businesses with shops above, yes, 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 that's what we want. We came together as a town, we voted a Village Commercial District, we allow these things without a special permit. As a town, we've decided this is what we want. This is why we want sidewalks, so people can circulate around the town from business to business or whatever. So yes, this is what we want. We have it down where Subway is located, there are businesses, there are apartments above. It's what Village Commercial is about. As to the, the process, and then I'll get back to the four corners, we're talking about cross purposes with Conservation. And the way the process works is if you own a piece of property, you first look at the zoning. You do the best you can with the existing zoning, and then you go to Conservation. They then say, well, we don't want you to go this far in this direction, or this far in this direction, or whatever, and within the confines of zoning, they will scale it back. In this case, we're talking about maximizing the use of the land by altering the zoning, because a special permit is zoning for a single lot. It should be done without Conservation input. What should be allowed there should be the planning board's purview, and then Planning, Conservation may scale it back. But to maximize it and say, you need to provide more lenient zoning because Conservation likes it, is the process in reverse.
I don't think that's what we were discussing. What we were discussing was the placement of the parking lots relative to the building.
Correct.
So...
So if the parking were in the back...
The question is, from a, from, does our bylaw suggest that we would like to have the buildings up front and the parking in the back? Yes. Is it a requirement? No.
Correct, correct.
Conservation has said that they, from their perspective, they would like a buffer from a parking area to a wetland area.
And that's the key.
It is, I think that two boards in the town working together is a positive development.
I'm not disagreeing. What I'm saying is, if you go with the, the spirit of Village Commercial and put the parking in the back, there may be far fewer units because of a greater buffer. If Conservation says, well, the buildings, they can be a certain distance to the wetlands, parking has to be further back, then it's, it changes the scale of the project. And that's where I'm taking exception to the...
I, I understand...
...part before the horse.
I understand what you're going for.
Well, I'm just looking for the process to be followed.
I think that we've had applicants come to go to Conservation first, come to us first. I think that applications, we've had people working concurrently with both boards at the same time...
I agree.
For decades.
I agree. But it's not the proper use of the process. I would do it the same way, if it were me. If I were applying, I would do it the same way. That doesn't mean it's the, it's the correct use of the process. But back to the four corners. Socially and economically desirable. Steve had raised the point that market rate housing doesn't help any kind of a housing crisis. There's no, I don't believe there's a shortage of market rate housing. At the same time, and, and, you know what, you can't take into account the fiscal effects. He's right. But I tried. However, we can take into effect the cost to others, whereas this project by extending the sewer line down 140, now, the people on Reservoir Street aren't hopping mad anymore. The people on 140, I don't know if they even know.
They do.
Okay.
It was discussed at our prior session, and we have guidance from Water and Sewer in Norton.
No, no.
That people are not required to hook up when the line is put in. If their system fails, they should, it may be advantageous then to hook up, or if, but if they have a long driveway or something like that, there's potential for a waiver, even in that, in that instance.
Correct. I'm almost 1,000 feet off the street, there's a huge ledge outcropping in the front. It would cost me a little extra to spend some money to get the waiver, but I have no doubt I would get the waiver. From the center of town, the whole historic district, all of those houses up near the street, they're not eligible for waivers. The fee from the Water and Sewer Department for a connection is currently right around $15,000, plus a sewer bill. It's not, it's not cheap. These, these people aren't getting...
And that doesn't include running the pipe from your house to the, to the line probably either?
No, although in fairness, running the pipe from the line to the house is probably similar to the price of a septic system, which they would have needed anyways if their, if their system failed. Satisfying existing need, no, this does not satisfy an existing need because the master plan clearly delineated that we have areas where we feel that housing is in need, one of them being the Reed and Barton site, I believe, over towards 495. I mean, we identified the areas where we feel housing is needed. We identified the areas where we feel business is needed. Now, we certainly don't need business all over town, and to use up one of the few spaces left to create a center of town, which is, being the poor cousin, we don't have a center of town. It, it seems wrong to give up the hope of a center of town. Advantages outweigh by far the detrimental effects, and again, shops over businesses, yes, yes, yes. It's not a greater impact. The site itself limits the impact. If you have a business that requires greater parking, then you need to scale back the business because there's only so much room on the site. If you look at the plan, it's all used. Going up against the wetland boundaries, nothing wrong with what they've asked for, but they're using everything. There is no more detrimental use. This is the site maxed out. And effects on the neighborhood and environment should not be greater than if the special permit was denied. I think they certainly are. Yes, there might be businesses that are open until 9 o'clock at night. There may be businesses that are open until 11:00. There may be businesses that close at 4:00. Residential is 24/7. So at least in my case, I would much prefer the by-rate use. And then as far as, if we're looking at just residential, you're looking at a density increase between five and six times greater than what's allowed by right for strictly residential use. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I do see one person virtually who has their hand raised here. If there's anybody in person who'd like to come up and get on deck, they can. The name on the Zoom is Val Cabral, so if you'd like to unmute and just introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, my name is Val Cabral, I live at 50 Mansfield Ave, which is right across the street from where I think is Lot E on these plans. I need to... I need to, I have two things to say, one of which is I incredibly second the idea that having some kind of a wildlife through way is important. We have a decent number of cameras on our property and we have seen every species you can think of in this area, I think except black bears. And we've seen bobcats in our driveway, towards the end of our driveway that would be crossing over into that currently wooded area that's at the tip of this triangle right now. So, as the kid of a conservation agent of many years and someone who's concerned with our open spaces and wildlife, I do think that anything we could do to preserve more of this would be good. And I brought that up the last time when the landscaping plan was mentioned. Landscaping is all well and good, but it's not the same thing as natural habitat. The other piece that I have to say is, I don't want to sound like I'm now being a Steve fanboy here, but like the idea of putting especially something like apartments with retail below, across from existing retail, the former Produce Barn and the lot there next to it, that is a lot more inoffensive to me than the idea of that entire strip being deforested and built on. And, you know, I, I understand that we're in a position where, you know, there are a lot of worse alternatives than some townhomes. I get that. But I just, I have to always argue in favor of trying to leave as much wooded space as we can. Whether I was untouched in the past as this, this section was or not, I'm always going to be in favor of that, but particularly in a situation like this where you're connecting two parts of a reservoir with a clean path from woods to wood right now, across from our property and with two next to us in both directions, two on either side, straight across there basically, from our small leg of the reservoir to the main leg. And, you know, if it's going to turn into a bunch of parking lots and too much light for animals to go through and all that kind of stuff, like that does concern me. So, I, that's the end of my ramble. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the room and the Zoom to see if there's anybody else who'd like to make any comments. I see somebody coming up now. If anybody else would like to make a comment. Obviously, I'm rambling enough to give everybody a chance to get their thoughts together. Sir, if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Phil Rotandi, 17 Reservoir Street. Thanks for your service.
Pleasure.
I know this isn't an easy thing to be on these boards, committees, whatnot. You know, I myself have volunteered in this town for 25-plus years. So, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this, so thank you. You know, a lot of my comments were before I heard some of the changes. So I can't totally walk them back because I haven't seen how the changes impact the whole thing. But when I, the original plan, and I, and I, you know, show this picture that they originally handed out. Three-story, 10,000 square feet. You look around, that, any other property abutting this, this is a monstrosity. And there's, there were three of them, now there's two plus. It's a monstrosity compared to everything around it, including the Produce Barn. So, when I'm thinking of how to develop something, does it fit in or does it stick out like a sore thumb? This sticks out like a sore thumb. Sorry to say. The amount of residents that you're trying to cram into this also, I think has been said before, appears to be somewhat excessive. I understand village commercial and, you know, we want the, we want the properties in the front, we want the parking lots in the back. That's great unless you live in the back. And then you're seeing the lights from the parking lot all night. Not really an economic benefit to those of us on Reservoir Street. That's a negative impact to us. Again, economic desirability, it may be great for the developer, going to make a lot of money. That's what America's about. For those of us who have lived in this neighborhood for 20-plus years, it's a detriment. So, again, one person benefits, easily eight-plus families don't. We've been paying taxes a lot longer. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to make any comments that's here? I do see one, two other additional hands raised in the Zoom meeting, that was quick. First person is, their Zoom name is Samuel, so I'll ask you if you can just introduce yourself and then I see John Shea on deck.
Hi there, I'm Samuel Gilbert at 50 Mansfield Avenue, so abutting. I just wanted to key in on one point here that Jim brought up that I thought was really important is the note that the, the effect should not be greater than if the special permit was not granted. And I struggle to imagine almost anything that could be done by right that, that could, you know, be anywhere near as high impact as adding this many units in this space. I think really, you know, for me to be, you know, comfortable and giving this a thumbs up and onboard with the benefits to the town and feeling like it could be beneficial, I'm, you know, strongly agreeing with a lot of Steve's points on placement and preserving the natural habitat. But also, you know, again, the placement directly across from Produce Barn or a gas station or something like that is a lot more palatable, especially if, again, we're talking about a number of units that fit within the plot and without running up into, into wetlands and without needing, you know, special considerations. We're not talking about something terribly big here. So the simple fact that they're asking for the special permit is not to get around something that is, you know, just one weird technicality that makes this hard to develop. It's the fact that there's, there's wetlands there and that, you know, again, there's, there's a lot, a lot going on in this, in this, in this lot here that makes it very difficult to, to develop in the way that they would like to, the magnitude that they would like to. So I'd like to mirror again that, you know, perhaps scale is the issue here. And in order for this to be low enough impact for it not to be a detriment to Norton, I mean, more residents is more taxpayers, of course. But tax dollars alone do not constitute a purely positive impact because those are also people who will need, you know, support from the town and any town services and anything that we benefit, like those tax dollars are spent on the people as well. So it's, it's not as if we're just collecting the money and can fund it into our schools or something else like that. It's, it's, you know, if our taxes are being well allocated, it should be relatively net neutral upon us other than, you know, again, giving people a place to live. So, again, just really keying in on, on, you know, the, the impact to the town in a, in a positive way here. You know, what, what really justifies a special permit here? What is, what is so positive about this versus what could be built without special permitting?
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. The next Zoom person that was lined up, his name is John Shea. I'm not sure if that's actually your name, but I'll ask you if you can just come off mute and introduce yourself. If you'd like to go on camera, you can, but you don't need to.
This is John Shea, formerly Biftan, you do have a good memory. I'm trying to figure out how to get on video, not that I'm shy of a camera.
We hear you fine.
Oh, good, thank you. I want to ask a couple of questions about the process of this whole thing. So bear with me as we back up a little. All the residents of Reservoir Street got registered letters that were sent to our house? We got three of them. You got them as well, correct?
So, for a special permit like this.
Yeah.
Letters are sent to abutters. So if you imagine the edge of the lot and you take a 300-foot radius from any point, those are all the direct abutters. Letters are sent to the abutters of abutters within 300 feet of the lot.
Oh, all right, good, thank you. So now with this said, they sent out that first, I'm going to call it set, of special requests to the planning board that we're all made aware of. Now, that set of plans has changed what I'm going to go with three times now or four times tonight. It is the fourth change tonight. Like you guys are still debating these changes as we're going along, correct?
That is correct. Right now, those permits, the permits that, what you received the notice for was the original submittal, which had three individual buildings on three individual lots, all of them similar size and composition. What they have submitted as a revised proposal at this point is two of those buildings and the third lot, which is the one closest to the triangle point, currently shows townhomes on that lot. That's all still contained within the same special permits that you were noticed for.
Okay, so then you probably just answered my next question. I apologize for being methodical, I just don't want to get lost in myself in this. So as the first appeal or the first request comes in, we can change these things until we find a point that they say, okay, then the planning board makes their decision on that final rendition?
Yes.
Okay.
These are discretionary special permits. So the board can say yes, the board can say no, the board can say yes with conditions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Now, this is my, the most important part of this whole run-on moment here. Right now, we're into the fourth rendition of this and I think the people, the abutters, are all in different directions. Not that we're lost and not that it's easy to get to, but how do we that are involved, we that are neighbors, keep up with these changes? I'm not saying that the people that mailed the first set, I suppose we mail them every time, but is there a way that we can access this a little bit cleaner, a little bit easier, a little bit more efficient?
Yes.
You know, as opposed to we have, you know, Reservoir Street was already about sewer, we moved sewer under 140, thank you. We were already about the houses being close to reservoir in 140, so we went to condos, thank you. I mean, I know that they're lifting and I will give them kudo, they're lifting, they're trying, which is, you know, in some cases in life, very different. So thank you to those that are trying to get this together. But so as we all as a group, the planning board, the people on our side, all have a very good rendition of what we're going to be agreeing to at the end. Does that make any sense?
Yes, I understand that. If you're looking to, let's see, can I give you a date of when we're going to finish this? No, I cannot.
Right.
We do have the ability for you to see the same files that we have access to. That is available, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, from the Norton Planning Board page on the Town, Town's website, correct?
Yeah, in the Dropbox, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's fine enough. I mean, I, you know, as we all, if we're all suffering to get through this ample amount of pages, then so be it. But that was one of my most important questions as, as how the process goes and if we keep on going this way with it. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your duties. I'm sure we're all getting work right here as this goes along. So thank you.
Yeah. No, and I would just say that whenever we do continue, continue discussions on a particular item, we always continue them to a specific date and to our, to whenever that specific meeting is. So we're not just going to say, okay, we're done talking about it tonight and we'll talk about it again some other time. Please pay attention to all the agendas we post for the end of time. At the end of this session this evening, we will continue to a time and date specifically. If the applicant isn't ready at that point, it'll still be on the agenda and then we will continue it to another specific day and point in time. But we try to avoid continual continuances as best we can. This is nowhere near the record and I don't expect it to approach it, so.
All right, cool. Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. I don't see it, oh, there we go. And I think somebody else coming up to the podium here in person, is anybody else joining the Zoom meeting who would like to make a comment? Especially if you haven't made a comment in any of the prior sessions, I would please encourage you to do so.
Jane Rotandi, 17 Reservoir Street. I am one of the abutters. I don't need to be spoken for, I can speak. When we purchased the property over 20 years ago, we thought we did our due diligence. I'm moving on from the mistake of the 1940s. We would have never purchased that property because we understand it was marked incorrectly. So I'm trying to be a grownup and move forward. Yet, there's a neighborhood there that this proposal has clearly broken up if you start to look at the for sale signs and the homes and families now moving just in our area. And we've been there all for over 20 years. So that's just a heartbreak that that's even being considered. If you're looking at your master plan, 2.2 on your goal, one of them says that you're looking to support young families, the senior population and first-time homebuyers. So why aren't we looking then for smaller units to help first-time homeowners as opposed to larger units, which no matter which direction of the street you come down, you would see a large, massive building? I won't add other adjectives to that. If you look in any other residential area in Norton, and I have not driven every Norton street, I've only been here for 30 years, I understand we are new, and yes, I will correct my husband who doesn't always count. He's volunteered in town for over 30 years. I have volunteered in town for over 25. So I don't know what other people who are coming into apartments who are going to put that time of time and service and effort not being paid volunteered like yourselves, so thank you, to try and make this town a place for people to want to be. There's no other place in town that I see actual residences, homes, yards that are whatever kept or unkept, mine has some weeds in it right now, but then you have a three-story apartment building right in front of it. No, I also don't want to see a bar in front of my house. We have a family and I don't want to see dumpsters in the back and all the shenanigans that goes on when you've had too much to drink out of my front window. So I'm very opposed to any of this. I'd ask that you consider looking into which the developers won't possibly get the same profit, but why aren't we supporting those first-time homeowners who might need and look at some smaller townhouse units? Thank you for listening, thank you for your time and service.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in here jumping up or raising their hand. If somebody, if I'm missing somebody, please correct me and yell out. I'll now go back to members of the board if we have any additional questions or comments that we want the applicant to consider as they move forward at this stage in their application. Again, as they've stated, what they're looking to do is finalize a set of plans to go through peer review for traffic, stormwater and all of those other items. If we don't think, if we think we've shared all of the thoughts and comments we have at this time, then I would go back to Mr. Jacoby and try and understand what timing might make sense in terms of continuing to a future session. Okay. Mr. Shea, did you have an additional comment or is that still your hand that was up from the previous comment?
Another question, thank you. Has anybody incorporated a traffic study on Reservoir Street with adding whatever we end up with? I know they did the traffic study on 140, the set of lights and stuff, but has anybody gone?
That would be one of the. That's one of the things that they would look to do after our discussion closes this evening. They did a preliminary traffic study, which didn't include some of the developments, specifically the one by McDonald's. So a revised traffic study is one of those deliverables which we would be looking for in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
We did include Reservoir Street, but the.
We did include Reservoir Street, but the comments that you gave us two meetings ago are the ones that we need to do to take into account.
Right.
So in answer to your question.
Could you just speak up a little bit?
In answer to your question, we would like to use your time and ours efficiently. And I'm just thinking that if we have to complete the traffic study and then it has to be peer reviewed, coming back in two weeks or four weeks doesn't seem like a great use of anyone's time. So I'm wondering what your schedule might be. Perhaps we don't come back in November, but come back in December to give enough time for those things to occur.
Right, that was, I think that was what I was getting to as well. Steve, I see you have your virtual and potentially your physical hand raised as well. Is there any additional questions, comments that you wanted to share at this point?
Like, just a general comment, I guess, not so much for the developer, but more towards the residents that live at the end of Reservoir. I've lived in it all my whole life. And when I was a little kid, the end of Reservoir used to be a tunnel of trees. And I was originally very upset when all of your houses went in there and knocked down the bars that I remember. So over time, things change and adapt. And what I'm trying to do here is prevent essentially the same thing that happened on the other side. So, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So what's your December schedule?
Well, I think we had, Brian, we have one meeting scheduled and one meeting in pencil, correct?
Two.
We have two scheduled, okay. And those were scheduled for which dates?
The 12th, which I don't recommend because that is our solar.
And the 19th.
Yeah, we, we heard three hours of solar last time. It was very interesting.
Your idea of interesting is a lot different.
So what would the other date be?
The 19th.
The 19th? That seems good.
The 19th works for us.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns, final thoughts prior to a motion to continue to December the 19th? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to continue to December 19th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Eric. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue to December the 19th? Okay. Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
See you. Good night, everyone.
Okay. And we are continuing with Reservoir Street discussion with our next agenda item. This is definitive subdivision 20336. This is noted as Zero Reservoir Street. This is a continuation of the discussion to consider 14 lots connected by a proposed road.
Where would you guys like to put this?
You put it.
I can do it.
Yep.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Edward Corcoran, I'm an attorney in Milton, representing the owner and the applicant in this case. Joined by Cameron Campbell, who is the engineer of record. We submitted some materials last week. We listened very carefully to the suggestions that came out of the last hearing that we needed to really focus on. And we've been concerned about this issue of sewer and whether or not someone who's tying into new sewer would have to do it under the town's sewer bylaw. And we hadn't really paid really close attention to some of the other things about the development of this property. And one of the things that we took a look at is that Cam's partner and I were involved in a project like this in Milton where we created a significant amount of conservation land and shrunk the building areas for home lots as a result. And, you know, this proposal for 14 lots, these are substantial lots, 60-some thousand square feet plus. That's a whole lot of extra building area that's really not necessary for a house in, in a yard, if you will. And so we thought about, number one, how do we sort of reconfigure this to really preserve open space? Trees, existing vegetation, existing forest?
Could you just project a little more for the people in the back of the room?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry. So we thought about how to look at preserving the forested space, still creating 14 home lots, but doing so in a way that maximized the area of preservation. And so what we've done is, Cam has drawn into this plan in color, areas in yellow, which would be areas of 20,000 or 30,000 square feet, which would be the area where you would locate a house with a yard. On the balance of the lots, in darker green, are areas that would be preserved. So 40,000 to 50,000 square feet on the lot would be preserved as open space. And to do that, we would propose creating a tree preservation and/or a conservation restriction around those portions of the lot. There would still be components of the lot, if you will, but the area associated with the building of a family, one or two family home and the yard would be restricted to those smaller areas. And we could contemplate, if it was the pleasure of the board, that we could contemplate creating a conservation restriction, deeding that restriction an easement to the Conservation Commission. We'd obviously have to work with the Concom on that. That was a result that came in the Milton case that I handled. And the second component of that, and Cam can get into more detail on the square footages and how much areas actually would be preserved. The second is that in Lot 5, up at the top, overlooking the Norton Reservoir, we've thought of two options for the town to consider. One, the town desired they could purchase that lot for permit open space. They have three years, would have three years to exercise that right to do it. Or if the preference is to simply provide some sort of a public open space amenity, then we could create sort of an overlook area, seating area with a pathway in that would be a public easement for public access to that location. We're open to either of those ideas based on the pleasure of the board.
So again, that's the white area at the top there?
So it's right here, you'd have this black dashed line.
Yeah.
That would be your open space easement. And then you'd have a four-car parking area with a little walkway down and a viewing area and seating area in the rear, outside of the 25-foot buffer.
Brian, are you able to share the color version of the map just to make sure that?
I don't think we, yeah, he doesn't have the color version.
Okay. Since we, since we have a member attending virtually at this point, that's a bit of a challenge.
Yeah.
Are they marked in any of the plans?
Yeah, they're all, this is, it's the same plan, it's just not, doesn't have the green on it.
Okay, and, okay. So Steve, just to make sure, have you been following what we've been discussing as it relates to the lots and the car bounty?
Yes, I have. And I've reviewed the plans too.
Okay.
And the third thing that we did, and then I'll turn it to Cam, is we handed in a draft of a home, you know, owner association, a form of a trust, which would require the homeowners to, as they take title to the property, it would be taking title with the restriction for tree preservation. It would require them to maintain those areas as natural areas. It would also be required to maintain the road until and unless the town accepts the road and any other utilities and drainage components. And as I said, in the Milton case, we developed and drafted a conservation restriction that was deeded to the town through the Conservation Commission and we would be certainly able to do something similar here if that was your pleasure. So let me pause there, hand it to Cam to get a little bit more about the details of what this, what this plan does, particularly relative to open space and forested preservation.
Thank you.
My name's Cameron Campbell with the Selberg Sala, one of the civil engineers on the site. As Ned mentioned before, you have 20,000 to 30,000 square foot buildable areas on the lots with the rest being preserved, which would in turn into a 28-acre lot. 55% of this lot would now be tree preservation area. It's about 15.6 acres, which is a significant number in terms of buildable and non-buildable area. And, yeah, that was pretty much.
We tried to, and I think what Cam also did is we tried to set it so that as much of that area would be connected.
Yeah, we.
Not isolated pockets, and it was really intended to be connected as much as possible.
Yeah, the center lots have double frontage and the buildable areas that were offset to provide that green space down the center.
Just to make sure my own brain is working straight, in the bottom right of the plan that looks like, the area that looks like a face, this hatch?
This?
Yes.
That is a wetland.
That's the wetland, okay. So we do have essentially a straight shot of that side of the, of the, of the map, all the way to the water?
Yes, yeah, right, right around.
We do have sidewalks on both sides of the street that would provide pedestrian access through the development and connecting to the potential easement to the water as well.
I won't speak for the town manager of the select board, but I know historically, open space areas that their historic preference has been for them to be included in the lots just with easements rather than carved off into a separate lot and sold to the town.
I think we would, so with respect to all of that.
I can get confirmation for you, however, whatever mechanism the town would prefer. I understand that you don't have a preference one way or the other.
I think from a, from a, from a technical perspective relative to the subdivision approval, the lot, minimum lot size has to be what it is. So the lots themselves would have to be, I suppose unless it was a variance, it would be granted. Those lots have to be as they are, but we can restrict through an easement.
I was thinking just the, I was thinking just with that top strip you're proposing as the community. Yeah. We recently did a formal cluster development, so we have gone through a number of these mechanisms recently, or at least I have. Okay, so I think you've definitely incorporated a lot more green space and enforcement of it. You've added the, the comment about a community feature, so thank you. I'll go to members of the board if we have comments, questions, concerns in terms of the revised plan, what we've heard tonight, if there's any aspects of the original plan that we're still not clear on. I know the initial questions that we had were in terms of a lot of the potential grading that was going to be needed, especially on some of the lots closest to the water. But again, the, the areas that are being designated for the houses, I think are probably, you're deliberately leaving a lot of those heavier sloped areas as, with that respect, conservation restriction.
Yeah, the, I mean, the proposed grading for the heavier slopes proposed are at the edges of the road, but the site itself, the heavier slopes in the rear.
I have a question as far as who's going to enforce when you say that you're gonna have these lots that they can't touch? Who's gonna, who's that gonna fall on to enforce and to observe, to make sure people are complying? Primarily, it would be with the homeowners association. The 14 owners would all have them. Have to police themselves.
That's right. And then building commissioner.
And it would be, and something like that would be a condition of the subdivision approval, so therefore would be enforceable by the town as well in perpetuity. And would fines be levied if they got caught taking down some of those trees or whatever by the building commissioner?
Yeah.
The same way, if you were right, it's something that we're supposed to do.
I don't hear that stuff, Tim.
I don't either, but it's a if.
I would, I would. I'm just gonna voice my frustration for seeing plans again for the first time at night of the meeting. We say it all the time, I know it's similar to the plans that we have, but I think anything being shown at the meeting should be in the file, especially for members that are, you know, hybrid, it is a hybrid meeting, and for residents that are attending hybridly. I think any information presented like this, you know, it's not that different. It just helps clarify what they wanna do with substantial clarification. Should be in the file. It's just a frustration of having it over and over again, I'm sorry. That's fair, that's a fair comment, we apologize.
Okay. So in terms of additional questions or comments for the applicant here? Again, this is a definitive plan. Thank you, Brian. Steve, I see you have your, your virtual hand raised here. I'll ask if you, what questions or comments you may have on this revision?
Well, I did wanna make a comment. I, I really liked the fact that they added the tree preservation that's cool. I exceptionally liked the fact that they're offering Lot 5 that's for public use as a community feature. Personally, I think it's an exceptional type of public park because it's a shoreline and the town actually having ownership would be similar to Jennifer Beach and not just a park in and within a cluster. So I would prefer that the town may have the option to buy this due to its exception, being the shore of the reservoir. The, the only other thing beyond that, I guess I would say Lot 4 was previously discussed as sort of a non-buildable spot in a way. It was not preferred. I know Laura had mentioned it also. I, I was wondering if, if it's not gonna be able to be built on, if that could also fall into the idea of being a park since it also covers part of the shoreline? It would fulfill the whole, the whole thing, so nobody's interrupting anybody else's property if they land on the shore. The other thing I would say by, by reducing the amount of area able to be built for all the houses and preserving so much tree space, is there another way of rearranging the houses to create a more contiguous section of forest instead of sort of a checkerboard pattern? But other than that, I, I see improvement for sure. So, thank you.
And by checkerboard, Steve, just to confirm, so we do have on the right side of the plan that white area, there's wetlands at the bottom and then goes straight up to the water. And then we have contiguous in the middle of the U, or the upside-down U. Are you looking for something that's maybe compressed and then leaves the whole back area? Is that what you're thinking of in theory?
In theory, the more contiguous the forest is, the better. And the more clustered homes are, the better, as opposed to a checkered pattern. The other, I guess, thing I would say is, if somebody walked up from the, the beginning of, I'm not sure which, which entrance you say, the one that is near the wetlands, and as soon as that first corner hits, if they could walk towards the rock wall to go all the way up to the waterway, because that's already protected for our first, I wonder if, the rock wall being a feature also and that wetland's kind of being protected, if that would be a, a nice way for people to walk out there too, as opposed to just up the road or park in the back?
Yeah. Yeah.
But I have a ton of suggestions, but I think that's, I see improvement, so if we can work on anything, that's, that's great.
I think that's possible. I, sometimes when you propose things like that, people who live on the other side of the property line get anxious about who might be walking approximately to the property. That would be my only cautionary thing, but I don't, other than that, I wouldn't have any concern about recommending inserting some sort of a walking path.
Okay. If I, if I could, we're right now in town building the rail drive, which is a walking path behind a lot of houses. And it's, being sold as a really good thing. It seems like it's gonna be a great benefit, and I imagine it'll be just as pleasant as the one in Mansfield behind all of those houses. And I think it would have the same effect, but even, you know, even less of an impact because it's a little bit of a sidewalk.
And that would certainly be maintained and policed by the homeowners association as well.
Yeah. So the applicant has signaled an openness to a potential path up the wall. Again, that's something that's not necessarily shown here, but they're open to it. See, as you mentioned, the community feature close to the water, I think that's a discussion that we would have with the town manager and/or the select board, just in terms of option A, option B. We'll put whichever one we choose to do into the conditions as appropriate. That's.
My concern would be that I wouldn't want a homeowners association making the rules of how residents can use the shoreline. I'd rather that fall to the town.
It would have an easement, I think the applicant's suggestion would have an easement for public use, that the town would be able to set rules around, but your, your point is noted, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there additional questions or comments for the applicant at this time? Much like the last session, I'll see if there's anybody joining us virtually or in person who would like to make a comment as to this proposed development. Please raise your hand virtually or in person. If you'd like to come up to the podium, I'll ask the applicants to see that for a second if people are looking to come forward. I'll hold for just another minute here to see if anybody needs to find their way off mute, who's not a member of the board. Nobody jumping to it quickly. Steve, additional comments that you wanted to make at this point?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that, again, anywhere that we can increase the affordable housing to 30%, gives us the ability to reduce lot sizes and setbacks, which might be, in effect, it could give them more space, more lots, more building. It could be more to the desired direction, and it could preserve more of the area for us.
Yeah. I think what you're thinking of would be more of a formal cluster development, and that's not what they've proposed here. There are specific rules and regs around the cluster, the cluster development, and my brain is not prepared to go for A versus B discussion at this point about what issues are involved, but I'm sure that the applicant knows whether that, if that's something that they looked at, if it's something they didn't look at. Mr. Campbell, is that something that you did, that you did evaluate as part of the process, whether a cluster would fit or no?
We did evaluate it, and Noren has a kind of a different cluster, because typically you get an extra lot if you do a cluster development. Noren, you don't get anything from it. The developer gets nothing from the, for the cluster, per se. So we think this is actually.
You can get increased density.
Yeah. But this, we, so this is essentially very similar. You just have, it'll just be an easement instead of.
In theory, a cluster, you could bring the whole U down, and the whole back could be set aside, or something like that, where it wouldn't make sense in this alignment of the idea. Okay. Keep going.
No, no, there's.
Oh. Steve, anything further? And I think, do you think we have an applicant, a resident who's looking to make a comment?
Again, just one more thing to reiterate. If the houses could be clustered close together and frontage could be preserved, in the future, maybe 10 or 20 years down the line, if there's a zoning change, there would be new buildable frontage if that were desirable?
Potentially, yes. Okay. Mr. Shea, I see you have your virtual hand raised. I will, I'll call you Mr. Shea rather than Biff Tannen, but.
Why, thank you. I'd like to compliment you, remember, at least it goes very well backwards, to say the least. Quick question on this. Plans have changed. Thank you to them again, sitting to your side that have listened to the residents, especially from the large amount of houses that they had in there before. It looks kind of nice. I wouldn't be in favor or against it, I'd probably be neutral. What I want to aim at, like Steve was just talking about, and the grander conversation as we have Reservoir Street on Tuesday night here, you're gonna start adding more and more people to this road. I've been here for 25 years, long before the houses were built, that'd be, he talked about when he was a young child, I do remember when there was woods here and the end of the road was different. And nobody likes to expand and stuff, but as life goes on, we do expand. But the one thing that has not expanded or gotten any better is this road. You're putting more and more people on it, physically walking, jogging, and then if you're gonna probably bring more traffic on it, is there any way, and I don't know who this falls upon, you know, they're gonna put two accesses on a horseshoe road over here? Is there any plans for sidewalks to connect with this shoreline area and connecting to the rail that they're talking about that's coming from Mansfield? I mean, it sounds all good collectively, but you're gonna run into a big safety issue when someone gets hit by a car down here, or you have a lot more accidents, or headaches, or speeding traps, you know what I'm saying? Like, I get how life goes on, but we kind of be careful and pay attention to what's heading in here, know what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand. I don't, Reservoir Street historically, because of how it was developed way back when, the right-of-way and the ability to put sidewalks on that street is, I'll just say, extremely limited, which is probably the gentle way to put it. In terms of, I think that what we talked about going down to the water was the potential for a walking path close to where the stone, the stone wall is now. The other proposal was that in the back of the, the top of the upside-down U, that there would be a small parking area with a walking path to the water. So that would be something that would not necessarily be exposed to the traffic of Reservoir Street itself.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you for that moment, I appreciate it.
Yep. Now, increasing sidewalks and pedestrian access and safety on Reservoir Street is something that many have looked at and few have succeeded in many ways.
Okay, thanks.
I suppose just thinking out loud with respect to that, there could be some reservation of frontage on Reservoir Street for a future sidewalk if the town has the capacity to pursue that.
That's something definitely to consider. Yeah, I think the, further up reservoir, it turns into, there's nowhere to put any sidewalks anywhere, because the right-of-way is people's front yards.
Yeah, they would have to do a taking.
That would, no, because we're not gonna talk about that, because I'm not having my name associated with that discussion. Yes. It's a challenging area further up reservoir, especially for sidewalks, as it relates to the public area. Having an area set aside for potential sidewalks certainly doesn't hurt you in any way. So again, this is a definitive subdivision plan. So for the applicant at this point, I'll ask in terms of process moving forward, as I stated at the outset of the meeting, we do have two members who are not attending this evening. One is remote, but we have two that are unable to be here this evening. In terms of next steps, in terms of approvals with the board, what are you looking for? Are you looking for us to make a decision this week? Would you prefer we continue?
I think we'd prefer continue to your next hearing, allow the two that aren't available to review the tapes and fill out the mull and applicate the forms, so that you have the, all members have the full opportunity to consider and vote. That'll give us an opportunity to sort of get these plans in, in color, and also to draw in sort of that walking path access area, maybe tighten up a couple of other little things for the plan, and get another draft of the homeowners association to you for consideration, assuming that that would be an attachment to one of the special permit for us.
Okay.
And we'd also be looking, before the next meeting, for the town's input on what to do with Lot 5, and if you can get Brian to send it over to us. Yeah, I think just what the town is thinking.
Yeah. I, we understand that you don't necessarily have a preference as to the mechanism, and that turns into a, we tell you what we want, and we write that into the conditions, and you're fine with it.
Correct.
So, yes, we need to do that blocking and tackling, but understood. With that in mind, is there anything else from members of the board that we want to ask at this point? Yeah, we're essentially suggesting that we would be potentially looking at a vote on this definitive subdivision at our next meeting. So this is, if we have additional comments, questions, or concerns to give to the applicant that they can incorporate as they revise, now is the time to do so. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to continue to our next meeting, or what are our November meetings?
The 14th and two weeks from then, which is the.
We're avoiding Thanksgiving week, yes. Okay. So the 14th and the 28th, are either of those very heavy?
So far, we only have things on the 14th, so I'm thinking.
Yeah, there could still be new applications that come in, but, but is the, does the 14th have a lot of things on it, or? Not an excessive amount at this point that stands out in your memory? Okay.
Typically, would this go later in the agenda because it's a public, a continued hearing, or would it go earlier in your agenda?
I try not to stick anybody at the end of the agenda as much as, frequently as much as possible. I know in the previous session, we let them know when the solar project was going to be back on the agenda, to avoid that one. So we moved into our public hearing section this evening pretty quick, so I don't think being in the public hearings section doesn't necessarily mean you're here too, too late.
We're happy with the 14th if that's, if that was reported.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Motion to continue, DF 20336 to November 14th.
So.
Thank you, Eric and Jim, the motioning crew. Any further discussion on the motion to continue to November the 14th? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. And, we have one more after this one?
Turn on the heat.
Okay. We now come to our final public hearing section.
The air conditioning doesn't work anymore, is that?
Sorry?
I'm trying to turn the. The air conditioning doesn't work anymore after a certain date?
Oh, I don't.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. Next agenda, item on our agenda this evening is special permit 20951 and DF 20946, so this is Zero Dean Street. So this is an application to consider for subdivided lots, each proposed to have a duplex, and two ways to connect the duplexes to Dean Street. So I'll turn it over to.
Thank you. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering, here tonight representing the applicant, Catherine McCraven, and her husband Chris Reed is with me tonight. Unfortunately, Catherine wasn't able to be with us because she's under the weather tonight, so we'll do our best in her absence. Just to get into this, Brian, can you go to sheet, I believe it's C3, it's the overall subdivision sheet? I think that gives us the best layout. One more. We go to one more, one more. There we go. I'm gonna talk off of this one to start with because it's the, the one sheet, it shows kind of everything and puts it all into context. So this is Zero Dean Street, obviously Dean Street is page south. This property is roughly 16 acres. There is a substantial amount of wetland on the site. The wetlands were flagged by a qualified wetland scientist. There is, and it's not shown on this particular plan, there is a potential vernal pool located in the wetland, kind of to the north of the site. It probably qualifies as a certifiable vernal pool, so we have respected it and stayed away from it. I understand that that's not in that, in this board's purview, but the reason I say that is to tell you that we were before the Conservation Commission last night. We have very, very limited disturbance within their buffer zone. The Conservation Commission did indicate that they were in favor of the project as presented. They only asked that we continue until, I believe, the 13th of November to give them time to write up their order of conditions within the 21-day period that they have. The other thing I'll say about the Conservation Commission, and then I'll move on, is that as part of, as you know, a part of their purview, regardless of whether or not it has a wetland impact or not, they hold stormwater permits out. The stormwater for this proposed project was reviewed by Pat Brennan on their behalf, who gave a favorable recommendation. He had a couple of comments that he recommended conditions of approval, which we agreed to.
He generally does.
Yeah, he does. That's very good, and we've agreed to those conditions of approval. So that's just to say that the wetland concerns and the drainage concerns have been thoroughly vetted, so hopefully that helps this board find some peace with this one. Aside from that, it's a pretty modest subdivision. We're talking 16 acres, two short cul-de-sac roadways, each less than 300 feet long, four lots in total. We are also before you for a special permit to allow those lots to each have a duplex rather than a single-family home, which is allowable in this zone. All of those lots conform to zoning, so we have no issues there. In fact, on this plan, you will note that there is a parcel A near this road, and a parcel B proposed near this road. They are not full lots, but they are intended to be conveyed to correct either a zoning, a current zoning non-conformity, or an encroachment on the subject property. So working with those particular waters, we have agreed to make some concessions and kind of work together to help those out. We are, just for reference, we are referring to this road as Kate's Way, and the road down here is Carl's Way. And as we go through the plan set, what you're gonna see is that the plan sets that each series is two sheets, one for Kate's Way, one for Carl's Way. So just to go through this, if we can just go to the next sheet. Get it there. Yep. So on this sheet, we did propose, and again, not that this board necessarily has it in their purview, but we propose to keep all of the proposed limits of clearing out of the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. Now, of course, in, there is an eventuality that as the lots are developed, that may change, but if that's the case, the existing order from the Conservation Commission would be conditioned to say that any additional encroachment would need to go back to them. So it would stay within their purview. It would not happen without anybody's oversight, and if it did, there would be severe consequences that I'm sure we're all aware of. On these cul-de-sacs, we have omitted an interior island. That was at the request of the fire department, excuse me, to get their, their apparatus through there easily. And the other thing that we've done, it's a little, it may be hard to tell from these plans, but you will see there is an easement right along the back here. The water department has required us to install a water main with a hydrant on each road, The water department has required us to install a water main with a hydrant on each road, but to loop them together to help increase water pressure, flushing capabilities, things like that. So we've agreed to that. It's a substantial cost to run the additional water line. Water line is obviously through the roof right now like everything else is, so that's part of the project. Just moving again down a little bit more, let's go to the grading sheet. So I believe it's series, that would be five A and five B. That is four B, one more. There we go. So this is the proposed grading sheet. Obviously, lot grading is a little bit subject to change as we pick final houses, but what I'll say about this, obviously, each one will be on septic systems. Septic system designs have not been completed yet. They will be done based on the individual house selected. However, we peppered this place with test pits. What we find, almost surprisingly, is very good soil conditions. Groundwater is at a very good depth in the soil, is pretty well-drained, so we don't anticipate having, and they're all consistent, so we don't anticipate having any issue setting septic systems. Just another note about stormwater is we've also required each eventual house to be equipped with a stormwater system that will collect and recharge stormwater from the roofs for up to and above the hundred-year storm event, which is substantial. Usually, when you do a rooftop infiltration system, you design for the water quality event, which is no more than an inch. This is over eight inches over the rooftop area, so it's a substantial system. The other takeaway from this sheet is the grading on the roadway. So the grades go from Dean Street and as you come in, they go up. We have done, but I think, I'm not going to say we've done our best, we designed this to match those existing grades, okay? So they meet the dimensional requirements of roadway slope, leveling areas, site distances, all of that stuff. But if you look very closely at the contours that you see, the proposed contour in this particular cul-de-sac is, I believe it's around elevation one twenty, and immediately underneath that, in the existing condition, is elevation one twenty. So we're matching those grades, we're keeping all of our grading contained on the lots. We're not implementing retaining walls to do that, so we're being as user-friendly as we possibly can here. And if you go to the next sheet, you're going to see the same thing, although the, the final numbers of the elevations differ just a little bit, but again, we are within a foot of the existing ground with our finished grade in the cul-de-sac.
What's the slope of the grade coming into that of those?
The maximum slope on those roads is, I believe it's nine percent.
That's pretty steep.
It's a little steep. We do meet the leveling area that we need for site distance. In fact, I can confirm that, Brian, if you can go to the next sheet, I believe is the plan and profile. Yes, it is, and this view is blurry, I can't see it from here, but I believe.
That one's.
Yeah, if I go to this one, excuse me, for just a second, I can tell a little bit better. Yes, the maximum slope on what we're referring to is Carl's Way, which is the northernmost, is nine percent, and that's just an effort to match the existing grades without needing retaining walls. If we start cutting into that slope, we're going to start to need some retaining walls because we have a very narrow place to grade this road out. Now that said, we do have the leveling area that's required for public safety at the bottom of the road and the cul-de-sac itself is flat, so it's only that approach up and then it levels out. On Kate's Way, which is the southernmost road with the curve, we are down to, if my eyes don't deceive me, that is five percent. So it's, it's much more, it's less.
But you have, you have a downhill going right onto Dean Street.
We have a downhill, but we do have the required leveling area at the bottom of it, which will allow for cars to obviously control themselves before they just roll into the, the intersection.
At, at very least, the second time they try and.
At least, yes. The other thing I'll note too, and I believe it's back on the layout sheets, we don't have to go to it, but we did measure site distance from each proposed intersection in either direction and we far and away exceed what's required by miles. So all of that, and then just to go, we are asking for some waivers in association with this, and I might jump around a little bit on this, but the first waiver that we're asking for is actually for the dead-end street. Your bylaw does not allow them without a waiver. Honestly, the roads are only proposed to gain the frontage needed to access these lots. It's, and we discussed this with the fire department, they're very comfortable with what we're proposing at this time, so I would submit that it's, you know, this is the best way to do this with the least amount of pavement in a otherwise sensitive area being near a wetland buffer area. Going beyond that, we have, there is one requirement, the roadway is, should meet an existing roadway at either a right angle, but in no case less than sixty degrees. This board can waive down to sixty degrees, but not beyond it, just given the existing geometry of the site where it's seventy-one degrees. Seventy-one degrees, again, with the leveling area, with the site distance. And we're also noting, if you go back to even the existing conditions plan, which we don't have the necessary scroll there, but these areas where we're putting these roads were clearly left for future development. They have the radii needed, they have left it, though it be width needed for a right-of-way of this nature. So this is what was intended here, at least when this was developed, originally carved out of whatever was around it. The other thing I will go through is we are asking for, and I, I'll be honest, I don't know that we necessarily need this waiver. There's a section of your bylaw that says what is required for a roadway cross-section, and it says to refer to the roadway cross-section detail. The roadway cross-section detail is completely different than the narrative of that section of the bylaw. For the level of service of these roads, we have gone with the roadway cross-section detail. We've included a waiver request just to be thorough. I don't know that we necessarily need it because there's a conflict in the bylaw, but we've done it. And that's, that detail is just to say that cross-section is to say that we are looking for a twenty-foot pavement width, eighteen inches of vituminous curving on each side just to control drainage runoff, an eight-and-a-half-foot grass plot on either side with no sidewalks. There are no sidewalks on Dean Street, so we would effectively just be building a sidewalk to nowhere, based on the fact that these are anticipated to be very low-service roadways. There is no opportunity to extend them, so the most you're ever going to have, if the special permit is granted, is four residential units on each one. I don't think the pedestrian level of service really warrants a sidewalk in this case. Beyond that, another waiver is, I, I believe the last one that we're talking about is, oh, there is a waiver for, to eliminate shade trees. We just can't, we don't physically have the room to plant them within the right-of-way once we account for the grading and things like that, and they would be very close to neighboring properties, so that is one waiver that we best for. We've also sought a waiver to eliminate for streetlights. Again, I don't believe that it would be appropriate for this level of use. And the last one is, your bylaw has a requirement to locate individual trees that exist on the site of a certain caliber or more, and we would submit that this site is completely wooded. Locating those trees to be removed would be an excessive effort. We have proposed an overall tree line and anything within that tree line would come down. So that is, those are the finer points of the presentation. I am glad to take any questions that the board or anybody else may have.
That, I would say first, thank you for putting all the waivers on one page.
You're welcome.
So that, one document so that we have them all in front of us.
Yes, sir.
That is something where, in other projects, Chris always goes, okay, what are the waivers that we're adding for? And Brian, I'm not sure if either you or Eric wants to note the one, the disconnect, discontinuity with the road detail for our bylaw sheet?
Really cross-section detail review.
For the bylaw, yeah.
I'm putting, I'll, I'll.
We have, we have a working document of all the things that we want to fix in our bylaws, so that would add to the list.
I will say that the narrative portion is in section five point three, and it refers to a specific detail, and I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but I will say that that detail for a roadway of this level of service is very much in line with what we're seeing in surrounding communities at this point, sort of a more low-impact development approach.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll again go to the members here. Do we have questions for the applicant at this time regarding their proposed development? Again, they're looking forward to, they're proposing duplexes on these lots off Dean Street and they're essentially, if we're going to call them driveway cul-de-sacs or small dead-end roads or the cul-de-sac, I think that's where a number of the waivers are coming in, is you're calling these a road, so a lot of the waivers are treating it as if it's a bigger road.
One thing that I may mention, Mr. Chairman, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but what I should have mentioned is that these roads are intended to remain private perpetuity, meaning they would be a homeowners association formed, they would be responsible for maintaining them, clearing snow, things like that. So this is not something that we would be asking the town to take over.
Understood. Thank you. Questions we can, I will get to members of the public in a second. I'll say, members of the board, if we have any questions for the applicant based on the plans that we have now, please let me know, otherwise I'll go and ask for members of the public for their comments, questions. Steve, go ahead.
Overall, I, I really like the plan. I don't really have anything wrong, but the one thing I would, I guess, ask is the same as I always do, a community feature made in any form, even if it means just for the community of the eight houses that are there, that the water easement, the ten-foot wide length water easement that connects the two cul-de-sacs, would there be any willingness to turn that into a walking path, since it's already going to be an easement? That is basically kind of my, my suggestion, that's all.
If I may, from the chair, to, just to address that, now that ten-foot easement is obviously, and, you know, if we had our druthers, it wouldn't be the case, but it is going to be clear, they will install the, the water line, so, and it does connect the cul-de-sacs together, so I don't see a reason why we couldn't condition that that remain a walking path, you know?
Okay. And if there's already a homeowners association, that would in theory fall into their purview?
That would be included with them, yes.
Okay. Okay. I know we had at least one member of the public here in person wanted to come up, so I'll ask them to come up, and I do see a hand raised in the Zoom meeting as well, so I'll try and go back and forth as best I can, sir, if you'd like to come up and just introduce yourself.
My name's Dave Collison, I'm on Dean Street, on town. Been a part since brunch a couple of years, been no secret about it, but I got a couple of questions. One is, have they come forward and applied for this special permit for the duplexes because it's an R eighty, it's required to have an application in?
That's what we have on file, yes, is the application for a subdivision and a special permit.
As far as the vernal pool, John last night pretty much said it was an actual vernal pool, it's not a potential one. We do have a lot of wetlands up in the back there, there is a lot of animals out there, and it's, the land that's out behind where they're doing all this, it's a bog area, you can't walk out there in the spring. The wet, the water travels through the ground, through my yard, through the dirt, up my neighbor's driveway to the swamp out behind him, because at one point, all this stuff was connected and basically, I can't even understand how they're getting on test holes one, two, three, and four, where they're getting no water, you know, at all, down from a hundred inches to a hundred and twenty-two inches of the ground. You can't dig six feet in our ground without hitting water. These test holes, were these done?
Sir, I'll ask you to address comments to the board and if I need to.
Okay. Well, I'm curious as to whether or not the test holes are done on the road area in there where they've already cut and cleared years back, that, that everything got to put on hold with the cease and desist going forward, or is this new grounds, you know, that haven't been disturbed yet? And if, if it's on the old areas that they've disturbed, I think that we should be looking at, maybe seeing some other test holes that have been in undisturbed land. In the general area where you're looking to propose this stuff, because these numbers are incredible, you can't, my neighbor out behind me, when he was putting his booster signal in for cable years back, I went and watched them dig the trench down his driveway, and he's right on Dean Street was where they basically took it in from the telephone pole, they trenched it, it was eighteen inches deep, but this was in August and the water was flowing. I got two pumps in my basement, they pretty much pump all year round. Everybody on that street, especially on that side of the street, pump non-stop, and you can't have a full basement. Are these duplexes going to be having full basements to them or are you putting them on slabs? Sorry, but, you know what I mean, it's, these are things to think of, because the house I'm in, I mean, I've been there twenty-eight years now, and before, the people I bought it from, they lived there for three years, but the place was sat empty, vacant for three years because the builder, the rest of the home builders went bankrupt and the thing sat there, and the basement was flooded with water. Everybody on that street has got water. And our greatest concern is when you start impacting the soil where they're looking to put the road in, all the filtration system in, I mean, we all got septic systems that work fine right now. Who's to say it's not going to change? And then we're all on the hook for now having to put in pump-up systems and spend an exorbitant, I mean, these are all potentials that we're looking at, and on top of that, the, the land being totally overrun. The other thing is, as far as the roadways going in, the one across from me, I mean, these things are, they're not fifty-foot roadways, they're up to twenty to forty feet on the roadways, which is, is needing a special permit and a variance from you guys to allow it. The one that's further down where Carl's Way is going to be, that, yeah, it looks like it's, something was going to be cut through there at one time. If you guys haven't been out to Dean Street and seen it, you'll see there's nothing but boulders in a, in a, in a crotch of a valley that runs through it. Steve lives to the right of that. He's up high, that is a hill there. So if they think they're going to be, and it's five percent grade, I mean, you're going to come down through there and you're going to have a total obstructed line of view for anybody coming out of there, from anybody coming from, say, John Spott, Hodge's Way, Eddie Torres' Road. I mean, because you've got a hill there, the car is going to be hidden until it's almost into the street. And I know that, I mean, everybody knows the traffic's like there, it's, it's only gotten worse like everywhere else in town. You can't get out of the damn driveway in the mornings. I mean, a couple of weeks back, I was backing out of the driveway, had to pull back into the driveway because the people coming down the hill from the power lines were coming so quick, it was, it was more important to pull back in rather than pull out and, and as I'm pulled back in and I'm looking back, the guy go, the first one going by me, he's going, and the one behind him is passing him on the other side of the road. They're doing sixty, sixty-five miles an hour up there. It's crazy what they're doing. And to have driveways like this that don't have an actual line of sight when they're coming out and they're going to be creeping out, creeping out for some of them, the one on Carl's Way, I can't even see how they could even put a roadway up there. And as far as going back to, you know, looking for a waiver for the trees, I mean, you're talking about cutting down trees, and you've got to be clear, cutting them all the way to the property line and they don't want to replace them, so everybody on that side of the road has to look at everything over there. I can understand not wanting to have, if it were to go through, yeah, streetlights would be annoying as hell if you had to be sitting there at night watching TV or whatever and having to look at all the frigging lights going down, down into a cul-de-sac. But if you're taking away the trees, you remove the buffer zone, I think it's more important to keep what you have left there of the trees in, in the area for that buffer, for the existing neighbors, and, and it'll just keep going on and on and on.
I will, I will say that the applicant has asked for a number of waivers. We can approve it, we can approve it with those waivers, we can approve it without those waivers. We can condition different things, so it is not, if the project is approved, all the waivers are approved, those are all individual decisions.
Correct.
And you mentioned the stormwater. The stormwater bylaw essentially is designed so that there is no net increase in any runoff leading the site. Anything that take the existing conditions now of stormwater there, you have to keep that much on the site or less, based on how you design the site. So the idea is that it should not impact runoff onto other lots. And that's why they're, that's why the.
There's a minimal amount of dry land out there.
And that's why they have, that's why all those stormwater things have air reviews and engineers that look at it. I know I'm not a wetlands engineer, so.
I'm not even, I'm a contractor, I do, I build, I work with this stuff all the time. But there's too many safety concerns that I'm sitting there and there's. But there's too many safety concerns that I'm sitting there, and there's too many questions and variables, because they're not even sure what type of home they're going to build. Is it a duplex, or are you going to put single-family homes? I mean, make up your mind, they haven't even decided, you know. This comes true as a duplex, but it all depends on how votes go for this stuff, because they told Conservation last night that, well, it all depends, the order of conditions may have to change because we may have to change the actual plans of what we're going to put in for homes.
That is always a back and forth between conservation and planning in terms of, when is the, when is the plan final, and all the steps that come after that?
I guess it would be who the planning boy, or then to find out exactly where these test holes were done, as far as where they were getting these, you know, non-water, because I, honestly, you'll hear from a few other neighbors, I'm sure, that there's nothing but water. And if you know anything about Norton, and I've been in Norton for 35 years, Dean Street, you can ask any of them, Dylan Barrow there, crossing, doing the septic stuff, Dean Street, it's, you had a hard time because of all the water. My daughter bought a house, three houses down from the Rehoboth line, and you're past Powell, and two to 12-foot differential from where we are down at our way, as far as the height, we hit water of 73 inches down there, we had to redo the septic system and put a bigger field in for everything. And how they can go down 122 inches, when I see water run 18 inches, you know, through my neighbor's driveway, and I see it in my yard when I'm digging in there, it's, it's not possible, not possible. So I think some other fresh holes would be good idea to check to make sure that undisturbed land, it could be close to where they were, 20, 30 feet away from them or whatever. And then, and my question also is, on the test holes, when I looked at the one for Kate's Way, it looked like there was a total of about five test holes they were looking at, but the one up in the furthest one in the back, it had, when I looked at the printing on it, it looked like, it could be in the sprint, it could be my eyes because they're not getting as good as they used to be anymore, but it, with the readers and stuff on, it looked like a number six. So I'm not sure exactly how many test holes may have been, possibility at one point, and which ones, if that one wasn't counted in their study, because they got two over off of Carl's Way, and they supposedly got four off of Kate's Way, and they only show five test holes on their, on their plan. So that other test hole in the back, why is the data from that been eliminated? Because that's also closer to the wetlands.
I understand, I understand.
You've got a lot of questions.
I understand your thoughts, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
I was asking, I will give you an opportunity, there's probably some clarification questions to do, but I'll go through some of the other members of the public who'd like to speak first, if you don't mind, sir. I do see, if you want to, I do see people on the Zoom meeting who are asking to speak, so I'm going to try and do my best to go back and forth here. The name on the Zoom meeting that had raised their virtual hand first, the name says Rebecca Feeny, so I'll just ask if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please. If you'd like to come on video, you can, it's not required. And then if you can just lower your virtual hand to save the A and D part of my brain, that'll be perfect.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rebecca Feeny, I'm at 101 Dean Street, Norton.
Thank you.
I had a few questions, and I'll try very hard not to take up too much of your time, I know that it's running late, but one of the questions that I had, well, first of all, we, you know, moved to Norton, and part of the appeal of our home was the fact that it had so much wilderness behind our house. It provides, you know, privacy and a sense of security and, and it's also a home for the wildlife. And so on that note, we had a question regarding the water line going in, are they removing trees to provide the water line? And it looks like there's a 35-foot setback. Would they be removing trees all in that area as well? And in regards to the concern of privacy, will they be installing a fence? What type of fence will it be? Where will it be located? How tall? Those are all concerns that we have. And if this plan is approved, will they be working on weekends? We have small children, we requested no work before 9:00 AM or after 4:00 PM if possible.
So just to summarize, you were asking about clearing for the water line, fencing, whether they'd be clearing in the setbacks?
Right.
And then the discussion about the hours of operations for construction?
Correct.
Yeah.
If they were including a fence in their plans?
Yes.
Break a fence, that would be how high?
All right. I'll ask the applicant to clarify a couple of points. If we're speaking to construction hours, those are generally things that we specify in our conditions, so we tell them they can't be building at all hours of the night or at 5 o'clock in the morning as a standard condition for any project. I do not have that off the top of my head in terms of what is, what the difference is for weekdays, weekends, et cetera, but that's something that the board can discuss in terms of how we evaluate the project and what conditions that we might set. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. If you, I'm going to go back and forth, I do see another virtual hand raised, but I'll ask the person here in the, sorry, the person in person, yes, to, if they'd like to speak. If you'd like to bring a chair over, that's fine as well.
No, that's fine. Hi, my name is Cynthia Lyden, I live at 115 Dean Street.
Oh, she's there.
Huh?
Just a reminder, if you're joining the Zoom meeting and you're not speaking, please mute your line. Thank you.
I've lived here for about 40 years. When I first moved here, they told us it was completely wetlands and they would never even build across the street or anything. I know times have changed a lot, but my particular yard, I'm more concerned, basically same thing Dave said, with the water tables, if it's going to affect it in any way. My yard in the summer, and even all this year, literally, we have a retaining wall, you drive by there on any given day and it looks like a pond or a river because of the water that runs off of that street. We recently had to have our septic system redone, which everybody's did, it was old, you know, but they couldn't even put it out front because the water tables were so high there. So again, I ask about how did they find out about the water tables? I mean, because if you walk out in that backyard, and I can sink up to my knees on any given day, especially with all the rain we've had this year. So I just wanted to let everybody be aware of that, and seriously, drive by, take a walk down my street any day, that recently, the town just had to put a whole new berm right around our street, right along, in front of our yard, because all the water was just going straight in there. So I'm just very concerned about that. Also, the trees, how far is this lot going to exactly? I didn't really get a good look at the pictures, I'd like to see the plans laid that they're online, are they? Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see, so next hand, the raised virtual, the name that's on the Zoom meeting says C-A-N-N-A, so if you'd like to come off mute and introduce yourself, please do.
Hi, my name is Gail Canata, and I'm at 113 Dean Street. My husband and I have been here for 41 years. We, our house started out with a slab because of the water table. We did build an addition, we went down four feet, and the actual floor brings it to three feet in depth, and we have to have a sun pump, and it pumps almost continually. We have, our grandson, he used to love to take hikes at three out back. We'd go 10, 15, 20 feet, and I had to not let him go any further because the water was over his boots a lot of the times that we went. Maybe if you got a really dry, hot summer, then we could go further out without there being water. Across the street, when they built the homes across the street, when we moved here, we were told you couldn't build across the street, it was too wet. So the Collison's house, who is across the street from us diagonally, when they, as he said, when they built his house, they couldn't sell it right away, and it was concern for the neighborhood because the cellar became a swimming pool. The people next to them who built, they started to put a full cellar in, right on top of the dirt, they didn't dig down, and I went over and I said, you do realize that this is wetlands? And they were told, oh no, we had this checked, this is dry. I went, yeah, really? Well, nobody else on the street has a full cellar until recently. And they built, and sure enough, that winter, they had three feet of water in their cellar. Now, the people behind us, if they want to build back there, there are many, many birds living out there of all different types and animals out there, because my husband uses game camera to kind of see who goes through our yard. That's going to interrupt all of that. Plus, we're very concerned with the water, like Miss Cindy Lyden, who's my neighbor first said, the water comes right between our yards and goes down, goes through a culvert under her driveway, and then in the front of her house is like a gully, and then they have another culvert going across the street, and then there's a retention pond down there that takes the water. But it's wet, 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 out there. And I'm just, we're worried about our septic systems, as Cindy mentioned hers, about it making it so that we have to replace it. And as retired, you know, people at this point, you know, that's money that we don't want somebody else to cause us to have to do. So we are, we have concern about the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
I do see, Ms. Feeny, again, if you had an additional comment?
I do, thank you. Are these going to be rental properties, or are they units for sale?
That has not been discussed. I'm not sure if that's something that we would be able to condition or require in one way or another.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, is the utility easement the water line that's going in?
The easement running between the two cul-de-sacs, yes. That's an easement that, I'm not sure if you heard the beginning, the applicant said that the water, Norton Water requested that?
Right.
For flow purposes. Because as everybody knows, water in Norton is always, always clear.
Thank you.
So I don't see any new hands, there we go. If you don't mind, sir, afterwards, I'm going to have the applicant come up and just answer a couple of clarified questions.
Sure. My name's Mason Aron, who live at 105 Dean Street. We're a direct-of-butter, we're actually downhill from the, one of the proposed properties. I just want to reiterate the concerns that everybody's expressed about the impact on, you know, water in basement, garages, our yard floods if there's rain in the sky. We have concerns about the wildlife as well, and security with people being behind the house. We did buy our property with the allure of the woods and just being able to look out there into nature. One thing that I was thinking about is the conditions that the Zero Reservoir Group before us presented, if this plan gets approved and moves forward, could there be a condition created where there's a limit to the extent they can deforest? And then that is put in, excuse me, put under the control of the HOA, and then under the control of the town? So the extent they clear during construction is the extent they can't continue to keep clearing afterwards, something that I was considering.
It is something that they could propose. I think their current proposal is stay away from the wetland buffer, and everything else is, they haven't provided specification on that in terms of what would be clear and what would necessarily be not. Obviously, it costs money to cut down every tree, so generally, there's a balance there in terms of what is cut and what is not.
And then my last question is about the water easement. After they clear, I know Steve was asking about potentially turning it into a walkway or a pathway. It does go behind the properties of at least five houses that have, either have small children or intend to have children, and I know from my perspective, I would prefer to not have people back there, you know.
There's, yeah, it's, it was a discussion point. It's something that we can evaluate. The pathway of the easement is going to need to be cleared anyway, so there may be a bit of a natural path regardless of what we do. But understanding your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
So, sir, if you don't mind, just a couple of clarifying points, and everybody's brought up water, you mentioned that the stormwater had already gone through Conservation, and Pat Brennan, correct, I'm not misremembering?
Nope, that's correct.
Okay. A lot of applications today, so I'm trying to make sure I'm talking about the same one.
A lot to unpack and a lot of great comments, I completely understand where they're coming from, but water came up from everybody, so let's have that conversation. With regard to the test holes, the test holes were done in virgin ground. The reason that there is one out of sequence, my understanding is that when our soil evaluator started digging out there, it looked as if that particular area had already been disturbed. There is a requirement for stormwater design, you cannot dig a test hill, a test hole in disturbed area and use it as credit to your design. So we would have to abandon that one and move over. So that's what we did in that case. The test holes are shown on the plans. Prior to doing them, our survey crew went out to the site, they staked the location of where the stormwater components were going to be, and we did the test pits in those locations. We then put those on the plans, and those test pits were witnessed by John Thomas for the Conservation Commission, who concurred with our assessment. I believe the benefit that we have here, and I understand the water issue without a doubt, don't get me wrong, I believe the benefit that we have here is that we're higher in grade, right? So generally speaking, especially when you have a wetland involved, water, groundwater runs a little flatter than the topography of the site. So generally, if water's down here and the site's raising, you have more distance to go before you get to water, and I think we're getting the benefit of that here. That said, some conversations, there was a question of slabs brought up. I don't know, is the short answer, if there will be full basements or slabs in this case, that will be up to the eventual home builder. I believe, however, and maybe Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe most towns, and I think Norton is one, that has a requirement that the basement floor, whether it be a slab or a full basement or a partial basement, be located a certain distance above the mean estimated high water level in that location. And that's controlled upon issuance of a building permit by the building inspector. So what would happen in that case is that whoever bought these lots, whether it be a developer or a single-family homeowner, would hire their engineer, whether it be me or someone else, to locate exactly where they want their house to go, they would go out there, they would dig a hole, determine where groundwater is, again, witnessed by the town, and then the house would have to be sited vertically above that. The other thing to note about the groundwater is that per Stormwater Management Regulations, all of our stormwater detention and recharge areas are required to be a minimum of four feet above the groundwater table that we determined. So they have four feet to go, and that's for two reasons. One, that is to ensure capacity, in times the groundwater might fluctuate a little bit. The other reason is treatment, because the dirt and the microbes in the dirt, just like the septic system, eat the contaminants, and this gives them more time to do that. So all of that is to say that, and again, the working theory is, if stormwater is four feet above the determined groundwater, and the slabs or finished floor basement, whatever it may be, is a minimum of, at least I believe it's two feet above groundwater, then there should be no impact to the groundwater. So there should be no reason for anybody's septic system surrounding the site to be impacted by this. The other thing I'll note too, is what we're seeing while we're up high on grade, most of that site, maybe with the exception of the two legs that connect to Dean Street, is trending toward the wetland. So the groundwater is flowing- So the groundwater is flowing that way as well, okay? So it's not as if the everything's, the groundwater from there is flowing down the hill to Dean Street, it's going in the other direction. So that's what I can offer as far as the water situation is concerned. And again, just to reiterate, the test holes were reviewed by John Thomas, who is certainly a qualified soil evaluator as well as a wetland scientist. He's got a ton of experience. It was peer-reviewed by Pat Brennan, who's a professional engineer, our stormwater designer was. And obviously, I put my stamp on it and I'm very confident in it. Just a couple of other things I wanted to touch on very quickly. Sir, you mentioned, and I'm sorry, through the chair, I know I'm not supposed to do that, but the vernal pool was mentioned. John Thomas did say he felt they qualified for certification, my botanist agrees. So the only difference between a potential and a certified vernal pool is that certain paperwork gets filed with the Natural Heritage Organization to certify that vernal pool. It was delineated outside of the season that allows you to make that formal determination and file that paperwork, but because of what we saw and said it very likely would qualify for certification, we stayed the required hundred feet away from it. So we are treating it as if it is and we're staying away from it. We talked about some limits of clearing. Kind of de facto on this site, you have a good portion of it that is regulated for clearing by the Conservation Commission anyway, right? Anything inside that hundred-foot buffer zone has to go before conservation, before they clear or they face significant fines and all of this stuff. Not to say that people won't break the rules, but there is a protection mechanism there. That said, if it is a major sticking point for the board, I don't think we have an issue discussing potential limits of clearing easements and things like that as appropriate.
Looking at the overall site map, is there, is there a way to roughly delineate that?
Yeah, absolutely.
As terms of a proposal?
Yeah, let me step up here.
Obviously, I'm not holding you to, just to give an idea of what we're looking at.
So the edge of this drainage easement is about the limit of the hundred-foot buffer zone. And that follows, obviously, parallel to the wetland line. Now, with a Conservation Commission filing, you could go into that hundred-foot buffer zone, and I would not want to impede an eventual homeowner's right to do that. But Conservation does have a very strict no-touch, twenty-five-foot buffer zone, so we would have no problem doubling down on that and adding an easement there. The other thing that we've done in the past is in any disturbed areas, we've been able to put some sort of a conservation marker periodically along that hundred-foot buffer zone as another way to basically notify the homeowner who eventually lives there, like, hey, if you're going beyond this point, you're in Conservation jurisdiction, you've got to talk to somebody. And that is something that I think would be more appropriate for the Conservation Commission to condition, but certainly, I know these boys have the ability to talk to each other and I don't think we take offense to that either, if that helped everybody feel a little bit better here.
Okay. Let's see. I understand your clearing for the water line.
Yes.
We talked about the set clearing in general. One of the residents had asked if there would be fencing proposed, is there current fencing proposed or no?
There currently is not. No. And I believe if you go to the grading sheets for A and B, they show the limited clearing.
If you can just pull those up real quick.
Yeah, that shows a limited clearing. We have, at least along this side, kept a limited clearing in more. This side, it comes out a little bit, but that's only to allow for roadway grading. We do have a ten-foot strip of clearing here along the water easement, which is necessary. But again, there will still be a vast forest behind that ten feet, so hopefully, honestly, it's not a lot of mature trees in that ten feet that we have to take out. And if you go to the next sheet, I just wanted to touch on that, too. So again, here, we are proposing to leave this area in here vegetated, and we are leaving a vegetated strip along here to help protect from screening of the butters and things like that. So we're trying not to be in the butters' backyards anymore than we absolutely have to, because frankly, I understand, I live in a remote place, and I don't want anybody near me either.
Thank you. I think that clarifies all the questions that I had noted down here. So thank you. And just in terms of, I see one person with their hand up, ask them just come up and ask me if there's anything else I can clarify from.
Sure.
I was just curious if you've done any perk testing in the septic areas? Or has that something that's going through?
As he said, they've done the overall testing for the stormwater with John Thomas, the septic designs would be later with the Board of Health and all that stuff. So to a point, I know Pat Brennan's reviewed a number of our projects, he's not an easy So he will, he will find many details and any other things, and he makes suggestions to our board or to Conservation of, the applicant's saying this, they could do this, you may want to condition X, Y, and Z. Those are things that Conservation's working through with their stormwater, I would assume. So having worked with John Thomas, having worked with that peer reviewer on previous projects, that's how they operate, and that's why the town keeps hiring.
I agree with him when he's talking about the watering back to the wetlands, but that's the whole wetland area is the problem, because that water just permeates through the ground, right through everybody, through the street. At one point, those two properties, you know, both swamps on both sides of the road, had to be connected through the non, no building codes, and I'm not sure why they've got building through the high points going through.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And did you want to come up and make a comment, please, if you want to come to the?
Can I do it from here?
You can, just try and introduce, and the microphone's right on the table in front of you, so it's like...
I think you'll be able to hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
I know he can hear me. Yeah.
Not touching that one.
We're Jeff and Pat Clark, and we live on West Hodges Street, right at the corner. I know nobody else here is on West Hodges. But I got a little concerned when he said, "working theory" and "should be," instead of, that didn't seem like they were very confident that what they were saying was going to work.
In terms of?
The water flow.
Okay.
And I'm curious, when they did those perk tests, was it during the drought?
All of that is, he's saying it, he's saying it in your ear, I think.
Just did it.
Yeah. It has, it has not been a dry last couple of months, especially on the, especially every single Saturday in the past.
It's been wet.
Yes.
But it still has time for...
We run to it, too, in the spring, that sun pump runs constantly.
Nonstop.
We're actually on our third sun pump. We've been in Norton for forty-five years, and we're on our third sun pump now. And we put industrial strain boards in there because it just runs and runs and runs and runs. And I can't believe that building back there isn't going to disturb the water table and send it off in other directions. That's what concerns me.
That's what the stormwater review is for and why they, why all those wetland engineers and water, water flow engineering models in terms of, this is the grade, okay, the water, it rains, it does this, the water will flow here and it goes this way everywhere.
And one other thing that he said is, well, it'll be directed away from Dean's Street and it's going to go there. What was it, there towards West Hodges Street?
I believe that there was toward the wetland area in the back of the site.
Okay. All right. And as far as the walkway goes, no, we've already, we were robbed once already, so I don't want a walkway behind our house.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's good to have diverse viewpoints, both on the board and why we always like having people here, speaking as, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Jeff Clark, Pat Clark's husband, six West Hodges Street. Like you said, we've lived there for forty-five years, and I totally agree with the comments and the remarks made by all the butters. Water's a huge problem out there, but I've got a question. Behind this proposed development is the vernal pool and wetlands out there. Who owns that land and is it deemed undevelopable, if I'm using the right term?
I understand your thought, yes. So...
I'd like to know who owns that land. Is it the same applicant?
It would still be owned as part of these lots until if they decide to donate it to whatever land preservation organization, they can do that.
These proposed lots?
They have not, they have not proposed any of that. It's proposed to be, it's part of the lot. It's in the wetlands area. As I think they mentioned, the Conservation is very strict about their twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot no-touch buffer. So yes, it's on the lots, but there's not a whole lot that they could do with it with the Conservation no-touch buffer as it stands.
Okay.
You're not the first group of butters to go, well, they said they could never develop this land because it's all wetlands. It's not the first time I've heard it, probably won't be the last. That's why real estate agents make commissions. So in terms of could anything else go here, I don't think I can say no, but given the Conservation restrictions on the site, it would certainly be a challenge to do so. That's about as much as I can go there, I think. Jim, do you have?
That might be a great point to kind of calm everyone's nerves, that a condition could be that they look to donate that to make it land preservation and just leave it as is.
That's...
Just a thought.
Whether it's a development restriction or donation or something...
Donation to the town, that way you don't get the old, oh yeah, you can't develop there, they've already experienced that once. If that land was donated to the town, then there's no more of the, well, you said you couldn't develop there, but you are. So just a thought.
Yeah. A Conservation restriction would probably be the town manager's preference, because that would mean that it's land that's still part of the lots and is still included in property taxes.
Thank you.
I'm a realist and a cynic sometimes, so... Okay. So I know we have a couple, we have one more member of the public who wanted to comment again, so I'll ask you if you wanted to just speak, introduce yourself again. Again, Kanata, I believe, apologies.
I'm not good at this.
That's okay. I'm still learning to.
Okay, I just had one question from that last display they showed, the last map or whatever you want to call it. Did they say, because it's hard for us to hear, did they say there's going to be like a buffer zone between the yards and the people who have been here for a long time with woods behind us? Are they going to leave any of the trees as like a buffer zone?
They are proposing to leave some screening, yes.
Do you know how many feet they're planning or is that still up in the air?
I would defer to the applicant to answer that, if you don't mind, just...
Sure. If I may through the chair, it, right now, it's proposed as a variable width, and some of it may be at some point influenced by the eventual homes that are built there and the necessary grading for those homes, things like that. Certainly, like I mentioned, you know, it is not our intention to build a house or an eyesore in somebody's backyard, and we certainly want to be respectful. So we can, we are open to have a discussion and let me take it to my client and talk about what we might be able to do, some things that we can implement to help soften that a little bit.
Understood. Are you looking for guidance from us or is that something that you feel you can develop?
We can offer something.
Okay.
That I think everybody can work with.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So coming back to the board, additional questions, comments for the applicant at this time? Steve, I'll go to you since you're virtual and I can't look in your eyes as much.
Hi. Okay, well, one of the things I wanted to comment on, because the residents have said no walking path in their backyard. If this plan is to go through, there will be a path in the backyard. What I'm asking is for the developer to make that path nice, possibly run a wooden fence down it and create it as a location that all the residents could enjoy. Potentially, it's a spot you could walk your kids in a nice private area away from the road, since you don't have sidewalks. And also, by creating an easement there, if the developer was willing to, between the lots, if they would create an open space, publicly accessible easement, so that all the residents there could continue to enjoy the woods instead of that being a hundred percent private property now and restricted from them. And if the eventuality that the wetlands were, or the LPS came into play, then that is, that walkway and the easement would allow residents to get out to that protected area and actually continue to enjoy the woods that are behind them.
Absolutely. Okay. Thanks, Steve. It's certainly something to think about. Watching facial reaction in the audience here, I got mixed results from that proposal. Okay. Any additional questions or comments for the applicant at this time? While we're on there, I'll go back to you, sir, I said this to the last applicant, we do have two members who are not in attendance this evening.
Yes.
They would be able to vote on this at a future session after watching the meeting and filling out a mullins form. Is it your preference that we continue this to a future session to that effect?
Can I just ask a question before making that decision? My understanding is that at least the special permit aspect of this, based on the members we have tonight, would need unanimous decision, is that correct?
That is correct. We would need five out of seven for any special permit.
And what would we need for approval of the definitive subdivision? I believe it's probably still at least four.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let's continue.
Okay.
Let us work on these couple of things, get everybody more comfortable and come back.
Okay. So if we're proceeding under that plan, do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns, homework that we can give the applicant that we need to ask, so that when they do come back before us, that we can have all of that information available as best we can?
I would just say pay attention to all the major concerns you've heard here tonight.
I've got them all written down, and we'll definitely work on it all.
Okay. And again, repeating our last discussion, our meetings in November are the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
I am here on the fourteenth anyway. If we can make it out of it, that'll be great.
Okay. Do we have any objections to that?
How many other things do we have on the fourteen?
We have a couple.
I was going to say a little lot, I mean...
The only thing that I would ask the board to consider, I know that the applicant on this project is ill, and that's something that we're dealing with, and the faster we can get through this process, I think the better, if at all possible.
Understood.
Some of these continues, is there just to make sure that Wayne is...
Or Laura, in this case, as well.
Right.
So again, the request is to continue to the fourteenth?
So move.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion prior to continuing to the fourteenth? Okay. You are none, I will go through the roll. Eric?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are continuing to November the fourteenth. Thank you very much, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you.
We do have a few things left to close out our meeting, so if you'd like to stick around, you certainly will. Other than that, we'd ask if you could please leave, please try to keep the volume down as you go. If you bring a chair downstairs, I will be eternally grateful.
Probably not.
Okay. So I believe that, I believe that poses our agenda for this evening.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that we'd like to discuss in this meeting's open session? Okay. If there's... Okay. Steve?
I got something real quick.
Yeah.
I was wondering about getting a definition on what a factory means to us in our, in our uses table, as opposed to the other uses that are listed under industrials, such as light manufacturing, assembly, machine intensive processing. If you were to exclude those uses, what is the definition of a factory? Does it have to do with capacity, people working there, the hours of operation, or what is, what makes it a factory specifically?
So just in terms of the use tables for industrial? So let's...
Yes.
Let me pull it up here, I'm looking at commercial uses. I haven't been in a Zoom meeting, so I'm... Is your concern that we don't have a good definition for manufacturing other than light manufacturing?
Well, I guess we don't define what a factory is.
Oh, okay. So it's, okay, so factories, manufacturing firms are allowed by right in industrial and nowhere else?
Sure, but what, what does that mean? Like, I think, I think I wrote it pretty well in the letter, but like my...
Okay.
...opposition would read that, or you want me to read it?
Yeah, we have that up on the screen now. So, so you're looking, so I'll just read, so we have several industrial uses regarding manufacturing, light processing fabrication, which you imagine is mostly laborer workers using hand-powered tools, machine-intensive processing, fabrication, assembly, which is machinery and automation. And then we have factories, manufacturing firms. We're not sure how we would define factory independent of machine-intensive and light processing. So what defines a factory as opposed to other uses? So, okay.
I guess, imagine a group of workers, let's say 10 or 20 people, that are hand-weaving baskets. That is not light manufact, I mean, it's not really, I guess it's technically lightning, light processing, but it's, it's almost...
Maybe artisan, yeah. Okay. So in terms of an action item, what are you looking for us to evaluate?
Well, I suppose, well, if we, I guess in theory, is there an ability to have manufacturing that is potentially even less intense than what you think of like a, like a small metal fabrication shop, or again, like, like an artist's studio, but at a larger scale?
Okay. So the proposal is for us to evaluate adding a definition for factory, or adding more detail?
I suppose, I just wonder if it has to do with hours of operation, or how many employees are in it, that kind of stuff?
I don't think that our bylaw really defines anything that way. If we wanted to set up delineation between artisan manufacturing, light manufacturing, machine-intensive manufacturing, or heavy manufacturing, then we could do that.
Could we do that on a night that's maybe a little less congested?
Yeah. I think that's something to add to the bylaw adjustment sheet and discuss.
Well, my, my question is, has this actually ever come up?
The challenge is that it never does until it needs to. Because Norton does not have, has a prescriptive zoning bylaw, if it's not in there, you can't do it. So it turns into a bit of a...
Maybe on a little bit lighter night?
Yeah.
Dive into that.
I think, I think in general, we're getting a pretty good size list of bylaw changes, so...
Springtime meetings can be fun.
Yeah. But I mean, we should probably, should pick a late night just to go through the list and at least prioritize stuff.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So I will try to get this all in soon, so...
Steve, if you have proposed definitions that you've workshopped, maybe I'm not sure if you've shared them, if you sent those to Brian?
I guess one of the, I guess major things I would say is whether or not the facility uses hazardous chemicals or hazardous materials would be a great defining factor.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna, if you want to pull these questions into an email, send that to Brian, then I'll, I'll put that into the sheet. You can have all your questions in there, so we can address them later.
Cool.
The hazardous one is one where it might be, I know that there are hazardous use regulations, depending on the zone, and whether you're close to wetlands, and the DEP stuff. So it's a question of, if it's already regulated by DEP, do we need to include it in ours? But we can always, we can look at it all holistically, sir, for sure.
Awesome. You know, if we have a planner, it'd be a lot easier.
You should throw that out there.
I'm the best you got.
You are excellent.
You are doing a good job, man.
It's pretty good, no doubt.
Okay. Anything else, anything else that people would like to discuss in this open session? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn for the discussion. I'm not really gonna wait for it. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yep.
And I will vote yes as well. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.